It is now nine thirty-six and I would like to reconvene the city council successor agency to the Westminster with development agency meeting. Call to order, so rule call please.
Mayor Nguyen.
I'm here.
Council member Fan West.
Here.
Council member Manzo.
Here.
Council member Ho.
Here.
And council member Nguyen.
Yeah.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Now we have a special presentation, presentation by Orange County Fire Authority regarding to lithium iron battery hazard. So I would like to invite all the council member to come down to the floor. Nope, nope, okay. Just stay. I would like to invite the rep. Oh, so who has the phone that playing the music? Please sit up, please. Thank you very much. Thanks for let me know. Okay, we ready to go? Okay, please.
Well, hi, Eric. Thank you again. My name is Craig Covey. I'm your division chief from Orange County Fire, serving Westminster and your residents and your and your council. So today on behalf, thankfully, the city manager has authorized me to come in and speak to you what I believe is a fairly important public safety issue. And we're gonna turn on a PowerPoint here shortly, hopefully. So going into the holiday season, thank you. Going into the holiday season, I thought this was timely. We agreed to bring this forward. The fire services kind of ringing the alarm on batteries and the hazards they are, the fire safety hazards we are witnessing in the fire service that is becoming more and more prominent in the last three, four, five years, but exponentially in the last year as as the hobby toys and everything else become more battery operated. So if a if a picture is worth a thousand words, I think this video should grab your attention even much more. Scooter in there. The volume's not there. There was a snap he reacted to. He goes unplug. Ooh. Plug the scooter. And it explodes. Those three and a half seconds. From the initial noise to the final resulting there. So if that's the scenarios that the public is starting to face and I wanted to get your attention to. It's a really become a very significant public safety risk. These mobile mobility devices like this and cars and other battery plugged in devices, like even a cordless drill. Frequently those are plug and forget type of things we use. And they're failing. So you can see the events that they they go into. And the issue is it's such a violent reaction that it becomes a very violent fire. And we're seeing many, many more of these fires that are completely destroying garages or whole homes in the past couple of years. As as technology has also advanced, so has cameras. And it's become more visible to us because we keep capturing events like this on camera. My first exposure to it was about five years ago, a fire in Rancho Santa Margarita, where we watched in a garage, a cordless drill battery charger fail in real time, slowly build and catch the whole garage fire, ultimately consuming the entire garage. So here's another example. So the gentleman runs to go get like we would all do, go get some water. He's coming back trying to put it out. I know it's kind of silly that he falls, but he's trying to get there to put it out in his panic, but then this thing explodes and throws two thousand degree liquid metal all over the top of him, also burning him on top of ultimately likely consuming the whole house. It's like fireworks going off inside your house with these batteries when they fail. Each one of those explosions are individual batteries that are part of the the battery powered device that is failing. So talk about these batteries. This is the common batteries that we use on a daily basis, right? And they're all very safe, intrinsically safe, and really don't have an issue with these common type batteries. With the exception of that CR two twelve twenty there. That's common in things like vape pens. And that was one of the things that we started noticing fires in. Women's purses, vape pens blowing up in people's pockets, blowing up and burning people. So there are those are or can be problematic as well. But the rest of that is all normal stuff and it's it's not as much of a concern. The stuff that we're dealing with now that has become the norm are the batteries like this. Okay, in two thousand and five Tesla started really producing mass producing their their cars. And the battery on the left, that eighteen six fifty battery is the common battery that's used. Well, that battery is also used in all types of other devices, like mobility devices and hobby toys and and drones and things like that. Tesla will put anywhere from three to seven thousand of these batteries in their cars. So it can be that up to that much voltage all the way down to the smaller stuff. As the rest of injuries industry started catching in and and building as well, you see these other devices like the prismatic cell and the pouch cell and those same type of device, just a different configuration. But for our sakes, the 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 potential and the safety hazard, the reaction when they they lose themselves in thermal runaway is the same regardless of the shape that the battery is it comes in. So what makes these fires different? Okay, the issue with these is they don't require oxygen. Normally, fire requires oxygen as one of the fuel types to make the combustion occur. They don't require. They'll fail on their own. Now they fail more often when they're being plugged in and forgot about, but it's not necessarily the exact thing. Just themselves can fail and cause these type of fires. They burn hotter, they burn faster, and they violently explode as their ultimate reaction when they fail. So when it comes to these, quality matters. When you do buy cheaper products, you have a higher risk of failures like what we're seeing here. They come like we talked about already in a bunch of different mobility devices, as you saw in those videos, as well as things like drones and hobby tools and and power tools and stuff. And then obviously they are a big part of the electric vehicles world. The the thing that you will see with these is that failure will start and you'll hear the noises, you'll smell the smells and things like that. That's the stuff that you have to start paying attention to, that your battery system is having issues. One of the other problems that we have with these type of vehicles, electric vehicles, is that they're they're stored underneath and and really buried in a car. So it makes it hard for us to get to them and put them out. Frequently companies are being involved in fighting these fires for up to a couple hours. Two hose lines, couple hours at a time, ten thousand gallons of water to put these out. Okay, so it's becoming a much bigger challenge to us in the fire service. The other issue is you'll see on this slide, they can reignite up to three weeks later. So we have to deal with that. We're we're telling tow yards to keep the car up to fifty feet, hundred feet away from other cars. A friend of mine had one, they put the car out twice in the street, thought they finally had it out. They said, put it to the tow yard, ten hours later, they went back with the car on fire. And this scenario you see here, they finally just dug a ditch in the tow yard and buried it in water, filled it with water, let it sit there for twenty-four hours. One of the things happening in Europe, and I think New York is doing as well, to bring out rollout dumpsters. Put the vehicle in it and submerge it for twenty-four hours. I personally had a fire in Irvine that was a pallet of batteries for drones that we put out twice, thought we had it out. Everybody was literally just leaving and we look back and it's on fire again. So we ended up submerging that one and a large thing to bury it and finally put it out, cool it down enough. After Hurricane Ian was reported down in Florida, they had a half a dozen car fires that Teslas that had been submerged in saltwater as part of the storm surge. And that salt ionization on top of the batteries caused a half a dozen Tesla fires in in Florida after the hurricane. And then this is a fire that I had shortly before I promoted in San Ana caused by a drone battery failure. I had a fire just prior to that in a mobile home here in Westminster that was on a rack of ten different chargers. So it's becoming more common, I would argue, and I don't have it to a fact, but I would say five to six of my last ten fires before promoting were caused by these type of issues. Now, New York FDNY, we're trying to work and improve our stats and track these incidents better. FDNY, you see the stats that I put up there, they had a two hundred and thirty percent increase in in fires in the last year to date from from last year and this year, two hundred and thirty percent increase in fires caused by this. And coincidentally, literally this morning, I checked out my phone and my feeds and they had a fire yesterday in a large warehouse, the evidence collection warehouse at the police department caused by an electric bike and destroyed a giant warehouse in New York. So it's it is a problem and it's persisting itself. Talking to our investigators, they're estimating on going on one of these every two days inside the county agencies or cities that we represent and protect. So here's some recommendations here. You know, the big thing is damage or unstable batteries, doing improper charging or storage or disposal can cause these things to overheat and violently explode. So here's some of the recommendations OCFA is putting out, is making sure that you only use devices with the batteries purchased for them. When you go, if your battery goes bad, replace them with like size or like your original equipment batteries. Use the proper chargers for them. Don't use bad chargers. Don't do the plug and forget thing. Unplug your stuff. When it's charged, unplug it and and don't keep it going because that overheating can cause as well. Store your bikes in places that if there was a failure, it doesn't block your exit. Maybe even consider not storing in your house, have them in a shed or something outside. If you notice any of those unusual things, power issues, smell, sound, steam, anything like that, stop using that device. Put it away. And 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 don't obviously don't just throw the batteries away. We have at our website, www.cfa.org, we have made some new safety flyers that are available there. The public can get them. If the city manager approves them, you guys can put them on your websites and and after to support your city residents. In addition, there's a whole bunch of other safety tips on there that's available. And then lastly, if you have any other questions, this is a fire down in Newport Beach just the other day, e-bike failing down there at the beach. So it's not necessarily in the house, it can be anywhere, obviously. So I'm available, should you guys have any additional questions?
Yes, Chief, thank you for that presentation. You spoke very, very briefly about disposal. I myself have witnessed twice garbage trucks on fire, rolling down the street and they had the only way they had they had to empty the entire. The fire department had them empty everything onto the street so they can work the fire as far as as far as for the community to know that they need to dispose improperly as far as taking them to the recycling center, I imagine that's the proper way.
Yeah, unfortunately, that is a pretty common event is improper throwing stuff and those trucks catching on fire and have to dump their loads. That that has become, I think, more frequent than previously. I don't know if I can relate it just to battery stuff. All hazard stuff should be properly disposed.
All right, to that, the recycling center, I think, all right, thank you.
Chief.
Any other questions from the council? Councilman?
Yes.
Council member West.
So Chief, basically with the lithium battery, it it sounds very dangerous and it can backfire and it can basically destroy a home or whatnot. Now, are there any study where they can prevent this from happening or the technology where they can make sure the lithium battery is more functional? Have you heard anything like that?
No, I'm not aware of anything like that. I think it really comes down to that my comment earlier about buying quality. I've heard some anecdotal stuff about, you know, buying more expensive bikes because the companies are more invested in those bikes and they buy higher quality products as an example, but is there a specific study? No, but as this industry expands or it really explodes like it is, you're gonna find people trying to cut corners and and product quality maybe start getting worse. So that that's not something that we have control over, but residents do by what they purchase. You start buying cheap off-market product, you run at heightened risk at an issue like this.
So then with like Tesla, where they have lithium battery and and other electronic vehicle, what is your encounter of those car being on fire? The statistic of that?
Most of that, I don't have a specific to statistic to quote that, most of the time we are involved in those is secondary to an accident. I believe there's been a couple of charging incidents I in in and around the country, but most of the time it's secondary to trauma or damage being suffered in an accident. We just had one the other night in Garden Grove.
Oh, wow. Now, would you recommend as the push for the state of California, pushing for electric school bus for all children with this? Do you recommend that we should have electric school bus as we move forward?
That's probably a big subject beyond this. Majority of the issues that we are having are more with the smaller mobility devices. Hobby device. Certainly, when you start getting into buses and stuff, you're talking about higher quality, better stuff, and I'm sure the risk is much less.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief, for raising the awareness. I think city manager is going to do whatever it takes, right, to for committee outreach, I mean, yeah, we're going to put it on a on a website and do YouTube or anything.
Yeah, so we so OCFA, they're they're contracted, but we do work with their their PIO team. And so every month they do, so monthly they have these campaigns in which they raise awareness for certain topics. And we're usually, we we will post what they put out, we announce it in our, you know, my city manager report. So we do put it out there.
Yeah, because I kind of worry when I look at the the video that you played, I never seen that before. I I know that it phone phone battery go off, you know, but I never seen something really serious like that happen from happening. And for the Christmas coming up, and we should, you know, do more reaching to the people. Because once the fire start, I think, I know that if we put something like that next to the the tree, the the Christmas tree is really serious, right?
Correct. Yeah, that's kind of the timing of why your city manager and I wanted to speak to this is coming into holiday seizing and all the the new toys and stuff like that, is just try to bring an awareness to this potential hazard and for your residents to think about how long they leave things plugged in and and how they use these devices.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments from the council? Hearing none, so I want to thank you, Chief, for bringing it up. It's very important piece of information that all of us need to know. And I guess that with that, our city manager and the staff will promote awareness out to our community about this lithium iron battery. Thank you very much for being here.
Welcome and congratulations to everybody in your new positions, either to the council or to to your position. And thanks for serving our residents and.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next is oral communications, Madam Clerk, would you please run over the procedures?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding any item on the agenda or not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, except public hearing items, members of the public wishing to address. The council may complete a public speaker card, of which we have a few of them. Following that, we will turn the oral communications over to our Zoom participants as well.
The first speaker who had requested advanced speaking is Nguyen Hung, followed by Camila Oberbeek.
Everybody laugh, laughing. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Due to a lot of request from Vietnamese community, they request I speak in Vietnamese. So I believe we have an interpreter here, I need him to translate for me. Okay. Maybe after I read. Wonderful, congratulations to who in the election. Second today. I am Nguyen Hung, leaving. Xin lỗi, nhau. Tôi là Nguyễn Hùng đang cư ngự tại đơn vị bốn thành phố Westminster, California, chín hai sáu tám ba. Hôm nay tôi viết thư này để yêu cầu hai người vừa đã cử tri Charlie Nguyễn và Nam Quan Nguyễn hãy tử chức vì quá khứ lừa bịp. Thì trưởng Charlie Nguyễn vui lòng cung cấp cho tôi bằng cấp hĩ sư như ông đã khai trong hồ sơ cá nhân khi ông ra tranh cử. Điều này tôi đã đòi hỏi trong nhiều tháng này mà ông vẫn chưa hề thực hiện. Điều này đã chứng minh ông đã gian rối. Ngày xưa tôi làm manager, I have five, four people because they lie on a resume. Hành vi thiếu đạo đức về khai danh lý lịch có thể giúp ông thắng cử, không mấy vẻ vang. Gần đây, ông Charlie, ông Charlie Chí Nguyễn, theo tôi đã có thể vi phạm Brown Act hoặc không công bình khi thay mặt văn phòng quản trị thành phố. Là bà Christine Gordon, khi thông báo riêng cho những cử tri bạn bè của ông trước khi thành phố công khai thông báo cư dân về một trăm đô la cứu trợ tiền thực phẩm cho những vị cao niên. Đây là một hành vi thiếu đứng đấn và thiếu phe đảng, thiếu công bằng. Đề nghị thành phố nên công bình phân phối đồng đều những tiền cho những người cao niên trong thành phố, thay vì để một vài nghị viên lén lút chia sẻ cho những người quen biết. Thứ hai, ông Nam Quan Nguyễn. Ông đã vi phạm nghiêm trọng nghị quyết bốn chín năm mươi ba của thành phố năm hai ngàn không trăm hai mươi và đã phải tử chức ủy viên giao thông về cái việc này. Ông Nam Quan Nguyễn cũng đã mạo danh cơ quan OFCA mới có mặt ở đây. Ngày ra tranh cử, từ năm hai ngàn không trăm mười bốn đến nay, ông Nam Quan Nguyễn đã vi phạm nhiều hành vi xấu như bị sở thuế California, franchise tắc bò đã tịch thu xe vì thiếu gần mười ngàn US dollar tiền thuế và đã bị tục tịch thu. Vi phạm luật lệ giao thông như vượt đèn đỏ và dùng điện thoại khi lái xe. Nhưng quan trọng hơn, ông đã từng vi phạm tội hình sự năm hai ngàn không trăm hai mươi khi dùng súng ham và ham dọa vợ con sau khi ly dị. Điều này đã dẫn đến một lệnh cách ly khẩn cấp từ người vợ cũ và cấm không được tang trữ vũ khí giết người theo hồ sơ số mười chín P không 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 tám ba hai của tòa thượng thẩm California thuộc quán cam. Hồ sơ này tôi đã xin từ tòa án với tổng thủ là một trăm năm mươi mốt cha. Trước đây, hội đồng thành phố cũng có các nghị quyết tên là ông thông nghị viên này sẽ nói gừm. Nhưng cái tình trạng này vẫn xảy ra với ông Charlie Chí Nguyễn và ông Nam Quan Nguyễn trong thời gian tranh cử. Hiện nay, ông Nam Quan Nguyễn đã dùng chính kênh YouTube của ông là Trust Media và các đại phát thanh Việt ngữ với một ngôn ngữ vô văn hóa, vô học, nhục mạ, cư dân trái ý với ông và loan tin thoát thiệt, không xứng đáng với tư cách của nghị viên đại diện dân chúng. Đơn vị bốn là tôi, ông là một người nguy hiểm cho cộng đồng. Tôi đứng kèm đó thư trả lời của bộ trưởng bộ bộ trưởng tư pháp của tiểu bang. Trả lời cho tôi về hành vi khiếu của ông. Tôi trong tinh thần giải quyết chịu việc một cách ôn hòa và thân thiện nên viết thư này nhưng tôi sẽ có thể vạn bất đắc dĩ phải dùng đến luật pháp là chuyện ngoài ý muốn, mong quý vị thông cảm. Tôi đang chuẩn bị hồ sơ để thưa thành phố về sự thiếu sót khả năng gạn lọc tư cách đạo đức và tội hình sự của các ứng cử viên khiến cho cư dân bầu lầm người cho thành phố. Lần trước, tôi đã hẹn với thành phố là hai mươi lăm ngày, nhưng tôi vẫn chưa nhận được hồi báo của thành phố. Hẹn quý vị năm hai ngàn không trăm hai mươi ba, sau khi mọi người mừng lễ giáng trênh và Tết dương lịch vui vẻ. Thank you very much. God bless of you. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Nguyen. I am a resident of District Four. I'm writing this this letter to request that Mayor Charlie Chin Nguyen and Council Member Nam Nguyen to resign because of the fraudulent claim that they have present during the election. First of all, as to Mayor Charlie Chin Nguyen, I have requested so many times that he provided me with his engineering degree as he claimed in his candidate profile. He lie and and so his victory is not so glorious. Recently, well, in my opinion, he violate the Brown Act. When he unfairly inform or unfairly and privately inform his friends and voter on behalf of our city manager, Ms. Christine Gordon, about the one hundred dollar gift card for seniors. This is an indecent and unfair and partisan act. The city, I suggest that the city should fairly and evenly distribute the gift card to the elderly and not just friends of a few member of the city council, city council member. Now, the second thing, as to Council Member Nam Nguyen Nguyen, he has violate the city's resolution, the resolution four nine five three that were passed in twenty nineteen. And because of that, he had to resign from his position as traffic commissioner in twenty twenty. He also falsely claimed during the election that he was endorsed by the Orange County Fair, Orange County Fire Authority. In addition to that, he had committed many bad acts such as having his car confiscated by the California tax department or franchise tax board for tax debts of nearly ten thousand dollars. And also for violating traffic law such as running red lights, using cell phones while driving. But more importantly, he commit a criminal offense in twenty twenty when he threatened his wife and children with a when he threatened his wife and children with a gun after um after their divorce. This resulted in an emergency protective order or restraining order from the X Y. Uh and along with that, a ban or he was prohibited from possessing um IRAM. That was under
Let me, let me just interrupt briefly, just to say that statements need to pertain to city business, so personal attacks are, we should avoid.
Those are the words he wrote before the city council meeting.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know Vietnamese, so.
Should, should the interpreter continue? The interpreter is I'm seeking guidance from uh council, council and also city, the city attorney.
No, you can leave comments in. All I'm saying is that personal attacks about that don't pertain to city business shouldn't is not, that's not what this meeting is for. If, if it relates to criticizing that person and what they're doing. So that's all I'm saying. So any part of the speech that doesn't, that pertains to
As always, they've always allowed, okay? And I have taken so many attacks. I, this is the first I've heard about. So if you're gonna be, you need to be consistent. We didn't do that before, and we're not gonna start tonight.
Always should do it right, not consistent, not consistency.
May I ask, may I ask for you to continue, please? Please, please, he will continue to finish it. Please. Please, he will continue with
Under Orange County Superior Court, uh under the California Superior Court for the county of Orange, case number 19P 00000832. I have requested and obtained a total of 151 pages from the court. Uh he is a dangerous man to this community. Previously, the city also had a resolution uh denouncing uh them. I'm gonna ask the interpreter to say the name of the resolution uh or censoring them, uh meaning advisor, Vice Mayor Charlie Chin Nguyen for um conduct and becoming a city council member. But that still, that is still, well, that still happened during the election and also it's, it's still happening now. At present, Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen has used his own YouTube channel, uh the Trust Media channel.
Time's up, sir. No, it's the ten, the ten minutes is ten minutes. Uh he can go ten minutes and then, then another ten minutes for interpreter. So please, uh next, uh next, I mean, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Camila Overbeek, followed by Fang Li, Office of, I think there may have been one.
Christian, it would, just really quick, before you start, my time. It would behoove you to remind the mayor that when he hears personal attacks, because you can't, you don't necessarily understand, it is up to the mayor to stop those from happening when they're done in Vietnamese.
That's fine.
Yeah, it, it, let me just clarify. If in any way it pertains to criticism of the, of a public official as to the performance of their duties, that's allowed. Well, I think what I was hearing was some things about private family matters in, in court. It didn't seem to have any relevance to, to the public official. That's what I was, you know, whether it's true or not is irrelevant. It seemed to be personal, that specific statement. So, but if it in any way pertains criticizing their ability to perform their office, that's, that would be allowed.
Yes, we've had multiple conversations on this topic and um at this, we're, the county, uh city attorney and myself are kind of a disadvantaged on that and, and we looked for somebody who can understands Vietnamese in this situation to step in. And well, if we don't understand the rules, we need to learn the rules and step in accordingly. So in this case, it would be, you know, the mayor or or Ho or, well, I guess any other council members, but somebody needs to step in.
Yeah, well, you know what? I think we are a country of law and order. And if all that accusation is against the, the council member, I mean, we have a police, we have investigators, whatnot. If that's the case, then that should be in the uh court of law. And that is just defaming his personal, which, you know, there is law and order. So let the court take care of it.
It's still not supposed to happen, and you are supposed to step in and stop it.
But I think the mayor and the city attorney has the authority to address that.
I, I, I think we need to proceed with public comment.
Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you.
Uh before you proceed, let me say one thing. Uh one, thank you for that, and I want to thank you for um clarification from our city attorney. And I just want to reassure, um because Vice Mayor Amenzel that I understand Vietnamese. So now with the clarification, next time I will start. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Happy after 10 o'clock, council. Uh let's get right down to the first order of business. Christian, before this meeting moves any further, I implore you to instruct this council to unblock constituents, specifically Ms. West. Currently, Ms. West is violating the First Amendment rights of numerous residents. A reminder, Amy, more than just the Second Amendment applies and exists. The Orange County Registrar Voters certified the November 8th election on December 2nd, 2022. And before she claims that it's her personal page, it is not. She has her title of Councilwoman-elect on said page and was even advertising tonight's event in the capacity of an elected official. Ms. West has had 12 days to do the lawful, just and right thing as a newly elected official and unblock constituents, to follow the letter of the law on her own accord and has failed to do so. So now I've made it a public issue. If Ms. West refuses to do so, I'll have no other choice but to contact the ACLU and seek advice from legal counsel on how to proceed forward. This is one election where I sincerely wish that Westminster required a runoff election between the top two vote-getters in races where no candidate reached the 50% plus one threshold. We now have two members of our governing body that had more votes cast against them than for them. Charlie, you may have gotten the highest number of votes of all the candidates in your race, but it would behoove you to remember that more than twice as many people cast their votes for someone else. Nam Quan, your election is similar. You received the most votes of all the candidates, but actually the majority of people voted against you. Additionally, I find it preposterous that you, an individual that was present in DC on January 6th, 2021, proclaiming the election had been stolen and what we know was an attempt to overthrow an election, an insurrection, a coup, is now sitting here on the dais, preparing to make decisions that will impact residents for this city for years to come. Quite frankly, you don't deserve to be here. Nevertheless, here we are. I mention all of this because there are numerous voters whose voices and votes were not heard in this election due to the way we do our elections. I hope that the two of you will always remember that for moving forward. It's imperative that you make all decisions for all of Westminster, not just to select few. And Charlie, as mayor, you set the tone. You're responsible for leading just a select, not just a select few. Uh Charlie, you are responsible for cultivating an atmosphere within the city that will allow healing after years of divisive, divisive antics by yourself and others, and I intend to hold you accountable every step of the way. As for the Westminster Mall specific plan, there will be 3,000 housing units built and 300 set aside for very low, low and moderately low income. My question is this, with the median income for households here in Westminster being $71,108 per the last census and the median rent for a two-bedroom apartment being $2,940, what good are those additional 2,700 units? Renters are typically required to make three times what the rent is. That means for a two-bedroom apartment, the income would require $8,820. Yet the median monthly income here in Westminster is $5,926. To further put this in perspective, in Westminster, the median household size is 3.29, but for easy math, we're gonna go with three. The median household income for a family of three in Orange County is $82,000, meaning the average three-person household in Orange County doesn't even make the minimum income requirements being asked by so many leasing companies, making the vast majority of these apartments unattainable for families. Meeting a state-mandated quota on paper is one thing, but it does nothing to put people in homes. What guidelines, policies and regulations is the city willing to put in place to ensure that actual people and families are able to have adequate housing? How will you ensure that these units are not leased to corporations and the like, thus making housing even less accessible for the average resident here in Westminster? Is the city willing to look into implementing a system that will find property owners for letting vacant, letting units sit vacant? In my opinion, these are important questions that should have been addressed previously and need to be addressed as we move forward with this project. Unaffordable housing has a direct impact on the houseless crisis we are experiencing. The city cannot continue to demonize the houseless while doing nothing to fix the problem. Where exactly are people supposed to live when they can't afford a home? Suffice it to say, the additional housing is useless if people can't afford it. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is uh from the Shrine Committee. Uh the next speaker is Kenny Wong.
I need the, I need the interpreter. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Charlie Chin Nguyen, Councilmember Clemente and Amy Fang Nguyen, Fang Wett, Chinese woman Kimmy Ho and Chinese man Nam Quang Nguyen. Uh good evening, I'm Kenny Wong. I've been a resident of this, the city for 40 years. And I am vice chairman of um Quan Trị Monument Committee. Thank you. I would like to congratulate our newly elected mayor, uh Charlie Chin Nguyen, our newly elected uh city council members, Amy Fang West and Nam Quang Nguyen. And Chinese woman Nam Quang Nguyen. And particularly, thank you for your responsibility today through the meeting.
First of all, I would like to congratulate our newly elected mayor, uh Charlie Chin Nguyen, our newly elected uh city council members, Amy Fang West and Nam Quang Nguyen.
Okay. Good bye, doctor. Thank you. Your responsibility to bring the city of Westminster to a new direction, to achieve results and to help the local population of the city of Westminster from today to the future.
First of all, you have been elected and you have taken the oath to lead the city in a new direction after tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for coming today. And you have promised the residents of District One and also the city of Westminster that you will be united in your effort to lead the city uh to actively and more, in a, in a more positive direction. Because of your cooperation, especially with the newly elected mayor and also newly elected, elected city, city council members, uh that you will lead the city in a positive directions and also that you will bring benefits to the city. Because of that, uh well, of your cooperation, especially with the newly elected mayor and also newly elected, elected city, city council members, uh that you will lead the city in a positive directions and also that you will bring benefits to the city. Thank you,各位. This is a special program.
and also newly-elected City Council members, that you will lead the city in a positive direction and also that you will bring benefits to the city.
Good morning. This is a special event. We wish to thank the City Mayor as well as all the members of the National Party of Westminster in this evening.
Respect to the mayor and City Council member, I have a special presentation that I would like to present to the mayor and the newly-elected City Council member tonight.
Good morning, members of the Quan Trị National Party. As we have discussed in the meeting, we have the intention of building a high tower and at the same time, we have proved our achievements, as well as the historical importance of the Vietnam War in Quan Trị.
The Quan Trị Monument is a symbol of high idolism of the victory as well as the true history of that battle.
But in the past, we have not achieved the outcome that we want to achieve that we will have a location to build the monument in Westminster.
So we thought that we would have a site that is worthy for the placement of that monument in the City of Westminster.
There are many conditions that do not coincide with the question of building the monument. As such, we have decided in the National Party of Westminster that we will reduce the size of the monument and remove the wall from the design of the monument. It is very important for us
Due to the many unfavorable conditions, we, the Quan Trị Monument Committee, have decided that we will now reduce the size of the monument as well as removing the wall from the design of the monument.
It is very important for us to remove the monument of the high tower without the new painting that we will present in the future.
Most importantly, we would be, we will be removing the dinh cong trang wall from the new design which we will submit to the City of Westminster.
Good morning. That is a good point and also a hard work of our comrades, as well as our comrades in the war. We want to have a monument of the high tower. We do not want the high tower of Din Cong Trang on the side.
So ladies and gentlemen, that show our goodwill, our effort to this effort, the joint effort of former Avon members as well as US service members, that we would now remove the wall, the dinh cong trang wall from the monument.
With the new painting, we do not have the high tower. I hope that, and I wish the City Mayor as well as all the members of Westminster reconsider, reconsider to put the intention, to put the intention in the meeting of the National Party of Westminster of the National Party of Westminster monument so that we hope that we will achieve the outcome and build the monument of the high tower in Westminster. With the new painting, we do not have the high tower. I hope that the City Mayor as well as all the members of Westminster reconsider, have the meaning to reconsider to put the intention in the meeting of the National Party of Westminster for us to build the monument of the high tower in Westminster.
With the new design without the ancient citadel of Din Cong Trang in the background, we hope that you would place this on the agenda and then you would approve the monument without the ancient citadel of Din Cong Trang in the background.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And good morning, Castleman.
Thank you very much.
Again, if the person from the Shrine Committee is here, they left a Gmail, 1995@gmail. That person, okay. The next person is Mai Nguyen, Mai Nguyen. Followed by Hillary Wong.
Hello, Mr. Mayor Charlie Ching Nguyen, Ms. Carlos Menzel, Ms. Kimberly Ho, Ms. Amy Fang West, Ms. Nam Quang, and members of the National Party of Westminster.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Charlie Ching Nguyen, or newly-elected Mayor Charlie Ching Nguyen, Councilmember Carlos Menzel, Councilmember Kimberly Ho, newly-elected Councilmember Amy Fang West and Nam Quang Nguyen.
My name is Mai Nguyen. I am happy and cheerful with the community of Westminster. I wish to congratulate the City Mayor Charlie Ching Nguyen and the two new elected City Council members, Amy Fang West and Nam Quang. May the mayor and members help the National Party of Westminster to build the monument of the high tower in the intention of the gallery. May the monument of the high tower be of our ancestors' blood, flesh, and sacrifice so that our children can remember our ancestors. Our ancestors died, left, and buried in the high tower of the National Party of Westminster. May the mayor and members help the gallery and wish you all good health and strength to work together and unite. I wish you all good health and strength in the day of our celebration.
My name is Mai Nguyen. I am proud of my life along with the residents of the City of Westminster. I'm proud of our newly-elected mayor and the two newly-elected City Council members. Mayor and Councilmember, I would like to ask you to help the Quan Trị Committee to place that topic on the agenda in your next meeting. The Quan Trị Monument signifies is a symbol of idolism, of the sacrifice of the blood that was shed by our forbearer to ensure freedom. And so, I would like to request that you place it on, place that topic on the agenda in your next meeting. And again, I would like to wish all of you good health so that you can do good work, you can bring unity and do good work for the city. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
The next speaker is Hillary Wong, followed by Tuibo. Hillary. Hillary Wong.
Well, good evening. I have drafted a paper to condemn Charlie Ching Nguyen. But I think today is a special day.
So I had drafted a statement condemning Charlie Ching Nguyen, but well, today is a special, or tonight is a special night and so I would reserve that for our next meeting.
I said that as a City Mayor, whether he is changing or not, or is he still saying the same thing? Because I think if someone knows how to change, whether he is changing or not.
I'm doing that because I would like to see if Charlie Ching Nguyen as the newly-elected mayor would change his behavior. I want to see if this leper here would, would or would not change his skin.
But I still want to say something. Mr. and Mr. Nam Quang, he is a City Mayor and Mr. Nam Quang is a senior officer. But both of them are wrong about the tickets that help the seniors to get a gift card.
However, I have a few things to say to you and newly-elected Councilmember Nam Quang Nguyen. You as newly-elected mayor and you as newly-elected Councilmember went on your YouTube channel to talk about the gift card for our senior.
And the sentence is "Kimberly Ho, Tai Do, Carlos Menzel" "have paid attention, took money back, took money back from the National Party of Westminster and provoked anger on the City Hall." Mr. Who just said that there is only one hall so that there is a process, a way to be fair to all the seniors. So you all, don't go crazy like that and cause danger to the other City Council members.
So you two went on your YouTube channel and said that Kimberly Ho, Tai Do, and Carlos Menzel unconsciously and heartlessly took away the benefit of the subsidy that was given to, that should have been given to our senior citizens. As you heard from our City Council, City Manager earlier, she was talking about the city is trying to figure out a way to make that program more efficient and that it would benefit everyone. So do not, do not go on your channel and say all these things because that would create danger to all the City Council members.
And fairness too.
And fairness too.
So, because some of you have promised today that you will unite and do the right thing for the people. So I ask you all, don't go up to that podium and call the candidates, the voters.
Please, you can address us, but don't mention another person because he's not here.
Okay. But yes, but let the people up so that they can call the guy or the girl because they are voters. So you have to respect the voters. If anyone calls you a guy or a girl, do you stand up like that?
Because you two have promised in front of everyone tonight that you would try to bring unity and benefits to this city. So I'm going to ask you not to have Ngoc Kye, Ok Ngoc and other people on your station calling people's name, this, calling people this and that. If you were being called with such, you know, you got those name-calling, being called this and that, would you be okay with that?
Would you, would you be happy with that?
We'd be happy with that.
So, and also, now we are calling our ancestors, the voters and candidates like Kimberly Ho, James Pham. Their ancestors died. Vietnam is a godfather of the Vietnamese. But if you put the podium of Mr. Nam Quang Trust up to call him a godfather, a brother, a sister, and he dies like that, if anyone calls him a father or a mother, would you stand up? But if you do it like that, then you are really bad. And the officials will see us as the uneducated.
So please, please stop dragging people's parents and ancestor into this fight and drag their name through the mud on your channels. Kimberly Ho, James Pham, their father or parents have passed away. Our Vietnamese, in our Vietnamese culture, you worship, you worship your ancestor. So why would you allow these people to go on Nam Quang's channel to drag the name of these deceased parents of our City Council member through the mud? Would you be happy with that? Would you be happy if someone do that to you? That is way too much. So please, please stop doing that because if you keep doing that, all the people outside of the community would think that our community are a bunch of barbarians.
Mr. Tony Buoi said that I should not continue to support Kimberly Ho. And if I keep doing that, when my children or my children run for office, they would not be supported.
My children heard that, well, they want to, they want to serve our community. They want to serve the city. But once they heard that, they, they decided that they they would hide at home and they would not serve the city. If, if the young people of our community heard that, they would not dare to come out and try to serve the city.
If you do it right, I would support you as well.
It's not that I only, I only support Kimberly Ho. If you do anything right, I would support you as well.
Was that, was that the complete translation?
It has a few more sentences.
Yes, can Mayor, I think we need to go ahead.
If you do things right, I would support you as well. I, I, you know, I am the type who would like to serve this community. So stop doing that, stop attacking other people, stop fully accusing other people. Because if you keep doing that, people outside of the community would think that, again, we are a community of barbarians.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, before we move on to the next speaker, I would like with the clarification from their CD, CD attorney, I will stop if you, if any one of you trying to, you know, talk on behalf of somebody else that they are not here or whether they are here, you can criticize us in case that, you know, for the thing that we did wrong or, you know, or even accusation, you know, I heard that. But, you know, don't, please don't. I will stop you. I'm sorry to say that, but please consider that. Thanks. Next.
The next speaker is Steve Ho, followed by Tony Buoi.
Good evening to all the elected members of the City of Westminster. And all the members of the National Party of Westminster, as well as the people in the gallery tonight. My name is Steve Ho, I'm a resident of District Four of the City of Westminster. First of all, I wish to congratulate the City Mayor, Charlie Ching Nguyen, the senior officer of the City, Ms. Fang West, and the senior officer, Nam Quang Nguyen. You can criticize us in case that, you know, for the thing that we did wrong or, you know, or even accusation, and you know, I heard that. But you know, don't, please don't, I will stop you. I'm sorry to say that, but please consider that. Thanks. Next.
The next speaker is Steve Ho followed by Tony Buoi.
Xin kính chào tất cả quý vị dân cử của thành phố Westminster.
Good evening to all the elected member or of the city of Westminster.
Và tất cả các nhân viên của thành phố Westminster cũng như các vị quan khách tại hôm nay.
And our city staff as well as the people in the gallery tonight.
Tôi tên là Steve Ho, cư dân của thành phố Westminster, quận Hạt số 4.
Hi, my name is Steve Ho. I am a resident of District 4 of the city of Westminster.
Trước tiên tôi xin chúc mừng Tân Thị trưởng Charlie Chi Nguyễn, Tân nghị viên Emmy Phan West và Tân nghị viên Nam Quang Nguyễn.
First of all, I would like to congratulate our newly elected mayor Charlie Chi Nguyen, our newly elected city council members Emmy Phan West and Nam Quang Nguyen.
Tôi xin được có một vài lời với nghị viên Kimberly Hall.
I have a few words that I would like to address our city council member Kimberly Hall.
nghị viên Kimberly Hall, tôi bà sáu năm vừa qua bà đã bỏ hết các cả thời gian công an, sự nghiệp để phục vụ cho thành phố Westminster.
Council member Kimberly Hall, for the past six years, you have set aside your business to serve the city of Westminster.
Bà phục vụ city Westminster với cả trái tim và khối ác của bà mà tất cả mọi người trong cộng đồng chúng ta ai cũng nhìn thấy.
You serve the city of, you have been serving the city of Westminster with all your heart and wisdom and that could be seen by everyone in the community and this city.
Những người mà biết đến cái chuyện này nhiều nhất đó là những nhân viên hiện nay của thành phố Westminster.
The people who know most about this are the employees of the city of Westminster.
Tôi bà theo sự nhận xét của tôi và một số người, bà là một người phụ nữ, hong minh, trúng cảm và mạnh mẽ.
Miss, miss or council member Hall, as I see, as I see, well, and many others as well, you are a courageous and strong woman.
Trong suốt sáu năm qua, bà đã làm được rất nhiều việc cho thành phố tốt đẹp, cho thành phố Westminster.
For the past six years, you have done a lot of good deeds for the city of Westminster.
Chúng tôi thật là ngưỡng mộ công việc, những công việc của bà đã làm cho city Westminster.
We admire the work, the things that you have been able to do for the city of Westminster.
À với tấm lòng của bà đã phục vụ trong những năm tháng vừa qua, chúng tôi xin yêu cầu bà hãy ở lại và tiếp tục phục vụ tiếp cho city Westminster.
So because of your heartly and dedication to the city of Westminster, we would like to ask that you remain on the council, you continue to remain on the council to continue to serve the city, the city of Westminster.
Để cho thành phố Westminster mỗi ngày thêm tốt đẹp và phồn thiện hơn.
So that city could be better and more prosperous.
Xin cảm ơn bà. À sau đây, chúng tôi cũng xin gửi đến bà một vòng hoa để tưởng lòng, biết lòng, tưởng mộ và cảm ơn đến bà.
So thank you to you, council member Hall. We have here this and I would like to present them to you to show our admiration for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your kind words. Thank you.
Next speaker, city clerk.
The next speaker is Tony Buoi followed by Sandeep.
Good evening, newly elected mayor Charlie Nguyen, newly elected council member Alan Phan West and newly elected council member Nam Quang Nguyen and also to Charlotte Menzil and Kimberly Hall. I was here, a, a citizen, a resident of Westminster for 7,665 days already and I keep staying here and fight for the greatness of city of Westminster. Behind you, in front of us, is the word "in God we trust". What does it mean? It means in truthfulness, we honor it. That means in cooperation, we have to work together to make Westminster great again. That is "in God we trust". And today, I would like to present to you a real things. They call it the real McCoy. That means when you start it, you can hear from, let me put it clearly so all of you will hear because a word worth thousand words, a picture worth thousand words and now we have a video worth millions words. Okay? And hopefully on us, we enjoy it after a long tedious day. And last week, uh, two weeks ago, I did not bring it with the voice because I respect the, the people she I respect the people here, look here.
My decision, um, if I am not elected mayor of the city of Westminster twenty, this coming election, uh, that's November 8, 2022, I will remove myself from the city council.
Yes, who saying I will remove myself from city of Westminster? That is a lady named Kimberly Hall. She said that if she was not elected, she will remove herself because she also said that the city of Westminster is a sinking ship. The only her can rescue the ship. Now she cannot do it, so she jump, jump out from the ship. And she also told the people on media that if she did not fulfill her promise to the people, she promised a lot of activity, building for the people, but now for six years, nothing happened. She has innovation that she will bring city of Disneyland, of Anaheim, bring Disneyland to make business with city of Westminster. But for six years, nothing happening.
Please.
Okay?
Please.
Those are the facts.
Please, I would like to ask you, please, because when your turn, people. Ma'am.
Okay, um, my decision, um, if I am not elected mayor of the city of Westminster twenty, this coming election, uh, that's November 8.
One more time to ask you to be quiet because we respect you when you speak, let's respect them.
This is the real picture and the real her program on Pogbon Sa TV broadcasting to the whole Orange County and to many other cities too. So trustworthy or honesty, I dedicate a letter to you that request the resident, from the resident of Westminster to remove or recall Kimberly Hall out of the Westminster city council members. If you don't reside by honorably, then people will take action and that is the only way to stop the problems in our community. For the past two years, problems arise in our community because of one single person, Kimberly Hall and another is Thaido, they colluded with each other. That is what I have today.
Time's up. The next speaker is Sandeep followed by Amy Mai.
Good evening, all city council members, city officers, residents, present residents. Congratulations to newly elected officer. I'm Sandeep, a Westminster resident, section one. A taxpayer, a frequent voter. I would like to express my concern to the councilwoman Kimberly Hall. A pharmacy doctor who also hold an executive MBA degrees, Doctor Hall. I just expressly want you to stay and give our best service to give your best service to our city. Since you have very high education, high general knowledge, you have a good serving ethic, super strong desire to serve, good teamwork, will define problem and provide a justified solution. You have the ability to think out of the box. You have so many plan to improve the growth of our city such as Westminster downtown, Little Saigon region enforcing city security by donating electric bike to the police, giving away your salary to the public fund and many more so far. I recognize in our young generation, you still hold gratitude and virtue of Vietnamese culture as well. I expect our elected official with high qualification not kind of astronaut politician. Astronaut, that means you just taking space and do nothing. When you just said someone, just so you said something, I just heard and you just heard it. Oh. You would desire if you not elected or something like that. Do you make a mistake here? Of course not. This is freedom of expression. If you think you make a mistake, just accept your mistake and apologize in the American well-being expression call, ten thing to tell winner. This is one. You make a mistake, you accept the mistake and learn from it. It is a winner. I want my city to be grow like surf city, like a Huntington Beach city or search city like a Stanton, not like a sloppy city. For this reason, so please keep, continue your best service to our city and also thanks ever so much for the brought the measure wise to the public and get approved by the people. That save our city from bankruptcy. Thank you.
The next speaker is Amy followed by Michael.
Hello, I need a translator, please. Thank you. Yeah. Kính chào hội đồng thành phố Westminster.
Good evening to the city council of the city of Westminster.
Quý viên chức thành phố và cư dân hiện diện.
City official and also the residents who are here tonight.
Thank you. Tôi là cư dân thành phố Westminster và là cử tri và là người đang đóng thuế.
My name is Emmy Mai. I am a resident of this city and also a taxpayer.
Hôm nay tôi đến đây để nói lên nguyện vọng của tôi. Là cử tri, là cử cư dân thành phố Westminster, tôi rất hãnh diện có được một nghị viên như cô Kimberly Hall. Cô làm việc chăm chỉ, đúng theo procedure và policy của thành phố Westminster.
I'm here tonight to express my, I'm here tonight to express my wishes. As a resident of the city of Westminster, I am proud to have a city council member like Miss Kimberly Hall. She work hard and she follow the procedure of this city, procedure and policy of the city.
Cô làm việc chăm chỉ. Đúng theo, cô đọc chữ, xin lỗi, cô làm việc chăm chỉ, cô có đạo đức. Cô có đạo đức ở đây, tôi nói. Cái ngày mà tranh cử, tôi vô tình đi ngang qua cái chợ Thuận Phát trên đường Westminster và Mac Nô Liê. Thì tôi thấy cô đang cắm bảng, thấy cái bảng của Nguyễn Mực Chí, của ông Nguyễn Mực Chí nằm rất xuống. Cô nhặt lên thay vì những người khác là người ta không ngó ngàng tới tại vì đang cùng một tranh cử, cùng một. Nhưng mà cô nhặt cái, cái tấm bảng đó đây, cô giật lên chính mắt tôi thấy, tôi đi tôi thấy như vậy. Tôi mới bắt, tôi mới thấy cô có một, là một người có đạo đức.
So during the campaign season, I happened to be by the Thụng Phat supermarket and I saw her picking up the sign, that election campaign sign that belong, that belong to Charlie Chi Nguyen. She was being ethical because she was doing that to her opponent.
Và cô, cô là một người phụ nữ rất là mạnh mẽ.
She's a strong woman.
Yeah, trước những kẻ tiểu nhân với những lời thị phi khiếm nhả.
So she's a strong woman facing all these petty things or petty and unkind things by, by other people.
Cô rất khiêm nhường, mới làm được vị trị, vị trí nghị viên thành phố cho đến ngày hôm nay.
She's humble and because of that and that was why, that is why she's still our city council member.
Có lẽ việc duy nhất là lý do cô muốn lấy lại, lấy lại tài đức của cô để cô dấn thân phục vụ cho cư dân thành phố Westminster.
And that may be because she's want to use her talent to serve the city or the resident of the city of Westminster.
Thank you. Vì vậy, chúng tôi tha thiết mong cô vẫn yêu thương cư dân như chúng tôi, vẫn tiếp tục con đường phục vụ như cô đã làm bao nhiêu năm qua.
And because of that, we would like to request that you continue to serve and to love the resident of this city as you have been doing for the past few years.
Đừng bao giờ tạm biệt khi bạn vẫn còn muốn thử. Đừng bao giờ từ bỏ nếu bạn vẫn còn cảm thấy bạn làm được.
Don't say goodbye when you still want to
Try.
try. Don't give up if you think you can still do it.
Đừng bao giờ nói mình không còn yêu người nữa. Lời nói này tôi nói cho cô nghe Kimberly Hall biết là cô thật, chúng tôi là cư dân, chúng tôi rất muốn cô phục vụ cho chúng tôi.
Don't, don't say that you no longer love and I'm, I'm saying this because I want, I and other people want you to continue to serve the resident of the city of Westminster.
Thank you. Never say goodbye when you still want to try. Never give up when you still want to serve our community. So thank you and God bless you. Và hôm nay, cái bó bông này là cuộc gia đình chúng tôi. cái bó bông này là cuộc gia đình chúng tôi, là của con cháu chúng tôi và những người bạn trung quanh hàng xóm. Họ nhờ tôi đại diện mang tới cho cô, tặng cho cô, những người đã từng ủng hộ cô và bỏ phiếu cho cô ngày hôm nay.
So the flower here are from my family, my friends, our neighbors, they asked me to bring them here tonight on their behalf to present them to you.
Yes, xin mời cô đón nhận cái bó bông này của chúng tôi.
Please accept the flower, these flowers from us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Michael Verenja, followed by Deborah Mariscal.
Good evening, welcome. New council members, two of you anyway. Charlie, you're back for more. Obviously a glutton for punishments, sir. I'm gonna start with you. Give you some good advice. When you want to put information out for the city residents, it's probably a good idea to make sure that it doesn't just go out for the Vietnamese-speaking people, but also for the Spanish. We have Korean residents here and those of us that speak English. You'd probably get a better response from it. Everybody would feel that they are all included in city functions, whether it's for the grocery cards or whether it's for the unity luncheon. It would go a long ways to have people think that our council represents all of us and not just maybe the... What's that term you use? Demographics? Ms. Ho? I'll borrow that. Anyway, it's a good idea to do that. This way, we know the mayor's looking out for us. You want us involved in it, and even if we don't go, at least we're aware of it. Ms. West, I'm actually surprised to see you here. When you ran your campaign, I don't think anybody really actually saw you anyplace. You didn't bother partaking in any forums or anything. It appears that you didn't want to answer questions about what your views were about things that face the city or what can you do about addressing these issues facing the city. You know, when I see that you only won by 23 votes, that doesn't look really good. And I don't know whether that was designed, you know, kind of a Joe Biden type of campaign. I don't know if you have a basement or not, but that's the way it looked, that you didn't want to have to answer any questions. You apparently blocked people from your site in answering things. So that doesn't really look good for you. If you're gonna sit up here with everybody else, you're gonna have to answer questions about what your views are, what your goals are, how you want to work with the rest of the council in solving the problems of this city. The city's quickly circling the drain financially, which brings me to another topic. Why in the world are you people spending thousands of dollars for the Ted parade? This might not be a bad year to skip it and then regroup for next year when maybe we're in a little better financial situation. Hopefully, the measure Y will take care of a lot of the financial issues that are facing the city. As I said, it's something to think about. I doubt seriously whether that's gonna happen, and I know we're gonna wind up dumping a bunch of money on the Ted parade. Carlos, you're my local rep in my district, and I don't always agree with you, but I think you're an honest, decent individual. And for me, that goes a long way. I don't need to have the same views as you. That's, that's not part of what I worry about. And more than likely, I'm gonna wind up voting for you again. My concern is, is that you have a proverbial target on your back when it comes to politics, and that's very unfortunate because you bring a lot of stability to the city council, you bring a maturity level to the discussions that go on here. You try to find a middle ground on what's in front of this council, and I would like to see you continue that. I gotta get question, the mayor's office. Why are they moving the mayor's office? Is it, it's not close enough to the restroom or it's too far from the restroom? Or is it too big or is it too small? I'm curious because again, we're talking about spending money for things. Is it a necessity right now or is it something that can be put aside until we take care of other things that are in front of the city? To me, financial responsibility is big, especially for this city because of what we're looking at. And yes, we can go back years when they had all that money and the city was flush with redevelopment funds and they spent it like a bunch of drunken sailors. And I can say that, I was in the Coast Guard, we're considered sailors. But it just, that didn't work out, and now look at us. So some of the things that I want to... Thank you, time's up.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Deborah Mariscal, followed by Terry Rains.
Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster watchdog. Thank you for finally removing this barrier which partially blocked the view from so many people in the audience of the dais. Congratulations to our new, two new city council members and our newly elected mayor. Or should I say to the new gang of three? I hope I'm wrong, but the writing is on the wall. Only Councilwoman Ho or Councilman Manzo should be appointed as vice mayor because they have experience. Amy West and Nam Quan Nguyen have zero council experience and could not effectively carry out the duties of mayor if necessary. Council, you must appoint based on qualifications, not personal or political alliances. Council, did you review the warrant register item 3.1? I emailed staff when I saw two checks totaling $1.8 million issued again to the Desmond Law Group for the levy settlement. Both were already reported as paid last month. Staff responded, quote, "We had an issue with the bank processing of payment and had to void and reissue," unquote. Huh? So I asked for more info and was told it was a payee mismatch for positive pay through B of A. Again, huh? So I asked for the exact reason for the mismatch and was told they don't know that it could be the account name was different or that the endorsements didn't match. Hmm. My point, every council member should be asking these questions, not me. Mayor Nguyen continues to disrespect city staff laws and policies. He flat out lied at the last council meeting, stating he only announced the grocery assistance program after the staff posted on the city's website. Fact, he first announced the program on Vietnamese media on November 11th. Fact, staff did not post information on the city's website until December 1st. There are just two regular business agenda items excluding urgency item 5.3, and both are Mayor Nguyen already trying to undo enacted law and policy on his very first day in office. Great start, Charlie, not, it's craps. Item 5.1 is Mayor Nguyen's request to create a two-councilmember ad hoc committee for the Ted parade. As our city manager and Councilman Manzo so eloquently explained at previous meetings, a key reason for the city taking over the parade is to de-politicize it and remove politics and politicians entirely from the parade planning and execution. Political struggles have almost destroyed the parade in past years. Yet here's our new mayor trying to re-exert political influence and control over the parade and staff. Nothing prevents individual council members from reaching out to potential sponsors and advertisers that they know to encourage them to participate, but ultimately, all decisions must be made and executed by staff with no influence or interference from elected officials. Mayor Nguyen, did you forget our city manager is a Vietnamese descent? I'm confident she understands Vietnamese culture and tradition. But I still believe the plan, the city should not have taken on the massive event for 2023 due to the extremely short planning period and the city's 2023 revenue shortfall. So council vote no on this item. Item 5.2 is Mayor Nguyen's request to move the mayor's office back to City Hall. Mayor Nguyen, let me remind you that the relocation of the mayor's office back to the council chambers where it used to be was part of the comprehensive seven-page public official and employee interaction ordinance adopted to protect city staff from intimidation, influence, or interference by elected officials, and it's law. There's no good reason to have the mayor's office inside City Hall. Mayor Nguyen alleges the office needs to be in City Hall to increase accessibility to visitors, which is BS. If someone contacts City Hall and has to meet with the mayor, they can either be directed to his office if it's Tuesday to, and Thursday 10 to 12 in chambers or schedule a meeting. The mayor can have visitors anytime he likes, but visitors should not have access inside City Hall outside of normal business hours for security purposes. Council vote no on this item. The November 8th election results have been certified. Councilman Nguyen won the mayor race with 7,655 votes, 33%, but more than doubled that, 15,613, 67% voted for someone else. Amy West won District 1 by only 21 votes. Nam Quan Nguyen won District 4 with 2,433 votes, 44%, but 3,101 people, 56% voted for someone else. Plus, a large number of Westminster voters left our local races blank. For mayor, 2,373 voters, 9.3%. For District 1, 11,06 voters, 14.8%. And for District 4, 812 voters, 12.8%. So guess what? If you add these no votes to the votes against these quote-unquote winners, over 70% of voters did not vote for Charlie. 15% did not vote for Amy, and 62% did not vote for Nam Quan. Let that sink in for a minute. Nam Quan eagerly attended the January 6th insurrection against our nation's capital as a staunch election denier proudly. Amy West has promoted herself as being also an election denier. How can you two accept elected positions if you don't believe in our election system? There is no room for partisan BS or extremist conspiracy theories on this council. Residents will not tolerate it, and you can bank on that. Happy holidays.
The next speaker is Dr. Hu Voe, United Council of Vietnamese Veterans. Dr. Voe. The next person is Raymond Addington.
Norrevo, Mayor, Charlie, council member Amy, council member Manzo, Kimberly Ho, and Juan, Nam Quan. I'm glad to come here, even I live in the outskirts of Westminster. However, I came here once in a while. As we start today meeting, when everyone take the oats, we say, we got together and keep moving, let the city forward. However, during the last few hours, I kept hearing the personally complain, question, criticize as six months ago when I came here. I wish and I pray for the city and citizens of Westminster look forwards and respect each other, help each other, and moving on. Thank you.
Well, that concludes the in-person speakers. If anyone on Zoom is wishing to speak, please raise your hand at this time. The first speaker is Roger Mindrum. Please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. I'm not sure if even good evening is the proper terminology now since it's so late. I was actually there early at about 6:15 and as we all got booted outside in the cold, I could foresee it was gonna be a late night, so I just went ahead and headed home at about 7:40. So I would hope that this, this kind of a swearing-in ceremony and meeting is changed dramatically in two years for the next districts 2 and 3. Please, this is completely uncalled for that we are doing public speaking at 11:00 PM. I did want to express some thanks to Mr. Tae Do. Probably not there anymore, but I probably will just send him a private note at this point now because there's really nobody listening to this anyways. So past my bedtime, so forgive my blabbering. Just wanted to say that, well, first congratulations to Charlie Nguyen, Nam Quan Nguyen, and Amy Van West. I know you've put a lot of work into campaigning and hopefully your results will benefit the city in its entirety. Even though you are representing a district, you are still working for all of us. And if you don't believe that, you can watch the meeting from four years ago in December when Mayor Tri Tà took his oath of office and declared that the people, the residents, are your boss. So please, at the beginning of your tenure, realize that you work for the people, you work for the residents, and the active, involved, educated populace in the city that attend the meetings and care about what goes on. We are a part of the whole process, and you work for us, you work for everyone, and the visitors that come to the city, and the employees, and everything like that. So please don't think you're gonna be up there as a ruler, as a leader. You're making financial decisions, hopefully wise ones, and that's what you're expected to do. As Mr. Verenja had talked about Amy West, I feel the same way. A lot of people have said that Amy West pulled a Joe Biden, hid out in her basement. And even though she probably didn't have one, but the theoretical basement hid out from the public, only had to answer questions door-to-door with no one disputing what she had to say. So the question I expect to be on many people's minds is, does Amy West and Nam Quan Nguyen have minds of their own or will they just be puppets of their new godfather, Charlie Nguyen, and vote lockstep alongside with whatever he wants? Your legacy starts tonight when you start voting. Your legacy and your reputation starts tonight with how you'll be voting. The proof, as Charlie Nguyen always says, show me proof. You are the proof. You're the proof in a recorded meetings as these. The proof will be if you vote lockstep with Charlie. I doubt you ever, you'll ever not vote lockstep with him because you really should have disagreements and not agree with everything along the way. So we'll see, we'll see how you vote. And if you vote lockstep alongside him, I really don't think, Amy West, that you've worked your butt off for the last five years campaigning to get in an elected position to just go along as a sheep and a puppet of somebody else. All I can do is pray for the next four years. Dear God, please help us weather the storm of the next four years that we are about to endure. Have a good night.
The next speaker with their hand raised is Deborah Mariscal. Please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Good evening, everybody. I apologize, I had to leave. I have an early morning tomorrow and wasn't able to stay. If we're going to have overflow outside, it was 48 degrees outside and I was there out until about 9:30, from 7 to about 9:30. There were not enough heaters and it was very uncomfortable. So what I would like to say is we have a fresh start now. We have new council members, and I would actually like to see some positive change from the past council. So one thing that I would like to see is I'd like to see meetings start on time. My time is valuable as well as the other residents that come to the meetings as well as all of the council, the attorney, and our city employees that need to be in attendance of those meetings. So that is, that is one thing that's really important to me. Secondly, we have had a lot of infighting in the council over the last few years. I would like to see you be able to get along and make positive financial decisions based on the entire population of the city, not just a certain sector of the city, of the city's population. If you're going to have any public events, I would like to see the entire city be invited and not just a particular portion of the city. I know that there was something recently that I would not have known about if it wasn't for Terry Rains. I wasn't able to attend, but it seemed like it was directed towards only specific people in our city. Wasn't able to attend, but it seemed like it was directed towards only specific people in our city. And that, that really needs to stop. The last thing I want to talk about is the cost of these meetings. So we should be able to conduct business within two or three hours. We've had many, 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 many meetings that have gone four, five, six, even seven hours. I've done a little bit of digging, and you could certainly tell me if I am wrong, but I am, after doing some research, it looks to me that the cost of our city meetings, our city council meetings run anywhere from thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred dollars an hour, not including the cost or the timeframe of those residents who actually come. My time is valuable, too. We need to get to business, make decisions, and not have the infighting that we have. We've had a lot of time that has been spent on possibly selling the civic center. Thankfully, that didn't happen. Measure Y, which actually was approved and voted on by our, our residents. And lastly, we've spent a ton of time on a monument that we cannot afford. We're three million dollars short in the first quarter of this year. The mall is going to take eight to ten years before completion. We have businesses that are leaving the city or closing, and we've got to do something. So please step up to the plate, do what you said you were going to do, and let's see what we can do to make Westminster a good place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amy Wash. Please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
Well, I, you know, I would consider myself a non-practicing Catholic. And I, as I'm sitting here since seven o'clock, I'm just praying for Westminster. I, I, I am not a big believer in prayer, but my God, Westminster really needs it. After watching what I've seen just thus far, I, I really am worried. I'd like to start, I'd like to start off with the fact that, you know, I find it interesting that I wasn't one of the residents that was blocked by Amy West. However, after Camilla spoke, I went and looked, and lo and behold, I can't find her on Facebook anymore, which means I'm blocked. I screenshot that, and I'll send it to the city manager later. I, I would suggest that someone sit down with Amy and go over the, you know, things to do and not do as a new councilperson. And please, let's send these new councilpeople to the next, you know, training or whatnot. You know, I, it's obviously late, and like Roger, it's, it's past my bedtime. I just really hope that, moving forward, this council can actually do work and get stuff done, rather than just having ridiculously long meetings about nothing, except for going back and forth and talking about a bunch of fluff. Let's get some stuff done, get to work, that's all.
If anyone else wishes to speak on Zoom, this would be the time to raise your hand, please. Mayor, seeing no one else, that concludes oral communications.
Thank you very much. First, I want to thank you all speakers that come out or over the Zoom, voicing your opinions. I've heard a lot, and lots of them are unsubstantiated accusations. But that's okay, we are here to listen to you. But I will not be in comments a lot about it. But I just want to let you know that by not saying anything, that doesn't mean that I'm taking it as a truth. As the truth. So with that, I want to close the oral communication. And then we move on with the next item on the, on the agenda.
I'd like to pull.
At this point here, no, not yet, please. At this point here, I want to open the city council reorganizations. And I would like to entertain any recommendation.
Mayor, may I? Yes, thank you. You know, when it comes to the, the selection of vice mayor, I just want to kind of voice my opinion on, and hopefully, the council can see. On this situation is, to me, it's not about how we feel about each other. To me, it's about the right thing to do, what is, what is, what is the proper thing to do as far as who would serve as our next vice mayor? And with that, I would say that it's a council member, Kimberly Ho. She is the senior council member here. She's been on council for now, I think you're coming into her seventh year. So I think it's just proper that, that we select council member Ho as, as our next vice mayor. So I would hope that council sees that and a nominee and a lecturer as our next vice mayor. So my motion is to nominate council member Kimberly Ho.
And just so I can clarify the process, when it comes to nominations, we open it for nominations, and then anyone on the council can make a nomination, there's no need for a second. And then you ask it, are there any other nominations? And you see if there's others. And then when there's no more nominations to make, we close that. And then we vote on them in order of the way that they were nominated. The first one to get a majority would be the person selected.
So is there any other?
Yes, Mayor, may I nominate Nam Quan? The reason why, I just feel like we need new, fresh blood. And I think the council in the past, you guys been complaining, we heard you guys' voice tonight, that you guys complained the drama that's going on, you know, in our council, we need change. And it's important for us to have change and new leadership who are fresh. And I think it's a good start to do that, and I nominate Nam Quan, council member.
Can I have a few?
Is there any other nomination?
Uh, council, excuse me, Mayor Nguyen. I just want a couple of other things I want to say about that, sorry, I should have said this earlier, but I'm using your words here, when, back when you were a council member. You made a comment prior to the election of my, when council member, former council member Tai Do made a nomination of myself, said that your words were, quote, "You're too new. You don't have, not enough experience." And at that time, I served on the planning commission for eight years. I chaired the planning commission for two years, that means I ran the meetings. And then after that, I served on the, on the city council for one more year, and still I was too new. Again, this is not about personal feelings, this is about, we talk about ethics and morals and doing the right thing. Well, this is doing the right thing. Council member Ho is a senior, and I believe the proper thing and the most ethical thing to do is to appoint her as our next vice mayor.
Any other?
One more other thing, sorry about that. Sorry, I keep forgetting, losing track of my thinking here. And just to remind folks, there is a legal process of running a public hearing, a public meeting. There is a legal process that we must maintain. If we do not maintain that and follow that, the legal process, it is possible to, that somebody, an applicant or a member of the public can help litigate against our city for not holding the meeting properly legally. So experience does matter in this situation.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Please.
So, you know, I, I hear, you know, I've been in so many training in the last couple of days to hear the voice of the staff. But not only that, when I campaign, I knock on doors and I hear the voice of our resident in our district. And, you know, many of them are embarrassed of the leadership in the past. And sorry, you know, that's, you know, they want change. And for us, new council coming on, I know we can give a fresh start and a fresh idea. You know, new ideas, moving economic plans, moving our city forward. But not only that, new ideas, because the thing is that everyone can learn. Everyone can learn the quorum, how to conduct this. It's, it's taught. So all of this council member who are elected here, they're elected here because of their background, of what the people want. But not only that, of their expertise in different areas. But the thing is that what I'm trying to say is, when council member Menzo addressed that, you know, it has to be through experience. But the thing is that doing a quorum is taught, and we have the best city manager here and this city attorney, making sure that we comply with the law. And it's very important, and that's their job. So I think that's the reason why I nominate Nam Quan, fresh blood, new face, new ideas. We're just sick and tired of what's going on in the past. You guys have a chance already, Kimberly have a chance, so it's time to move on. It's every year election, okay, every twelve month. And so if Nam Quan, you know, he's going to be under the supervisor, supervision of city manager, and then also, you know, city attorney, who's going to give him, standing by him, to help him, to help the mayor as well. So I think it is important to have fresh blood, and that's the reason why I nominate Nam Quan.
Is there any other nomination before I close the city council reorganization? Hearing none, so I'm going to close city council organization. Now, we should move to roll call for the first, which is the nominee, the nomination from Vice Mayor Carlos Menzo to, for Kimberly Ho.
Yes, Mayor, so that nomination was made by council member Manzo to nominate council member Kimberly Ho. Council member Fan West?
No.
Council member Manzo?
Yes.
Council member Ho?
Yes.
Council member Nguyen? Mayor?
That's for Kimberly, not Amy. You want Kimberly to be vice mayor?
Like I said, experience, and experience helps.
Just to clarify, the, the motion is to nominate council member Ho as the vice mayor. How do you vote?
The vote, the vote is to select, to select, is to actually appoint. To the, Kimberly Ho to the role of Vice Mayor.
Basically, there are two motions, let me repeat, let me repeat, there are two motions on the, there is two nominations on the floor.
Then your vote would be no.
Thank you. Mayor Nguyen?
No.
Motion fails to appoint her, the next.
So now let's, let us, would you please? We listen to you, and now it's time for us to do the business, city business, and so we want to move on. So.
Please, order.
Order.
I like. So now we are moving to the nomination for Nam Quan to be the vice mayor.
Correct.
Roll call, please.
So the next nomination was made by council member Fan West, and that is to nom, to select as vice mayor, council member Nguyen. Council member Fan West?
Yes.
Council member Manzo?
I was going to say something else, I've been doing this for a while. I'll just leave it alone, it's not going to help anything, I know.
The vote was no?
His vote, no.
Thank you.
No, no, no.
Council member Ho?
No.
Council member Nguyen? Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries three with two noes, congratulations.
Okay, next is consent calendar. All matters listed under this consent.
May I speak?
Yes, please.
Just want to say thank you to a councilwoman, Amy, to nominate me as a vice mayor.
Yeah, we do need fresh blood, we do need fresh idea, we do need those who can move our city forward. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to consent calendars. All matters listed under the consent calendars are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless members of the city council or staff request that specific item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action or discussions. Earlier, I know that the city attorney asked to read, to pull item three point three.
Motion to pull item three point three.
A second.
And approve the remainder.
We have motion to approve, and second on the floor, to approve all the items on the consent calendar except for three point three.
Thank you, Mayor, and that motion was made by council member Manzo, seconded by council member Ho to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item three point three. Council member Fan West?
Yes.
Council member Manzo?
Yes.
Council member Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Now, three point three, city attorney, please.
Yes, and this item is the second reading of the ordinances which are adopted at the last regular meeting, or at the last meeting. And so, as was discussed at that meeting, we had a number of council members for, in that case, that had conflicts of interest because this is a very large rezoning of different properties. And a number of council members lived within five hundred feet of the rezoned properties. So we have a change, at, at the last meeting, we drew two names, which is what the process that you would do to get the minimum number of three votes to vote on it. And we had former Mayor Ta and now Mayor Nguyen selected to participate. So we still have Mayor, who is entitled to continue. Once you're selected, you're allowed to continue with that item until it's completed. So he would be allowed to participate. Council member Manzo would be allowed to participate. In this particular case, in looking at the, the maps, I've noticed that council member Wes lives within five hundred feet of some of the properties being rezoned. And of course, council member Ho does from the last meeting. The new council member, Nam Quan Nguyen, you actually live almost within five hundred feet, but it's like five hundred to a thousand. We, we looked at that, and in discussion with staff, planning staff, there's a, there's a test you apply. There are properties kind of on both sides of where you are, and given the circumstances, we felt. It, there are properties kind of on both sides of where you are, and given the circumstances, we felt that that probably should be seen as a conflict. Ultimately, the question lies with you, but in, in caution, and which is what I would recommend, you would have a conflict as well. In which case, if that's the case, I need to draw one more name in order to make a decision together with the mayor and Councilmember Manzo. So.
Please.
Do you agree that there's a, a conflict of interest? And for yourself in this situation?
Yes.
Okay, so in, in light of that, um, I have a, so this one's a little more holiday.
Perfect.
Yes. We can thank uh Debbie Corita, our uh community development director for this. So I have uh the three names in here, and so um if I could have the assistant city manager select one of them. Councilmember Kimberly Ho? If I could look at the others, just so we can see you had names for each of the others in there. So, uh, what we would need is the two of you to recuse yourself uh from this discussion. And then Kimberly, uh, Councilmember Ho could stay and participate in this second vote. And again, this is just the second reading of an ordinance that was already read for first reading.
Okay, at this time, uh, we're, I'd like to entertain uh any motions to approve.
Yeah, motion to approve.
My second.
Okay, we have motion and second on the floor, roll call, uh, vote please.
Thank you, Mayor, and that motion was made by Councilmember Manzo, seconded by Councilmember Ho, and that is to um adopt ordinance number 2593, entitled in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, California, to approve a zoning text amendment, case number 2022-0430, in order to implement the general plan land use element and housing element by adding chapter 17.260, mixed-use zones and section 17.250.035, housing H overlay to title 17 of the Westminster Municipal Code and adopting an addendum to the Westminster General Plan Final Environmental Impact Report, to read by title only and wait further reading, and also to adopt ordinance number 2594, entitled in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, California, to amend the official uh official city of Westminster zoning map, case number 2022-0430, by rezoning parcels of land designated in the general plan as mixed-use to a mixed-use use zoning district, rezoning certain parcels of land to contain a housing overlay, rezoning certain parcels of land to be consistent with the residential land use designation in the general plan, and adopting an addendum to the Westminster General Plan Final Environmental Impact Report, read by title, to be read by title only and wait further reading. Um, Councilmember Manzo?
Yeah, excuse me, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero with uh Councilmember Fan West and Vice Mayor Nguyen recusing themselves.
Okay, we have our here. I'd like to move on with the 5.1, request to create an ad hoc committee for the 2023 Ted Parade. Any, at this point here, I would like to hear any comments or I would entertain any motion for this.
Mayor, um, um, have a little bit of, you know, when you think about the, the timeframe, the um staff has to put this um major, major event together. Um, I think, and creating a, just another an ad hoc committee, another giving this staff more, just one more thing to deal with, it's just gonna create more of a, more of a problem, more, something else for them to manage. Um, it's just not productive and it's not very efficient. And really, just like I said, it's just creating another job for them to do. Uh, there's nothing, there's nothing, absolutely nothing holding back any, any council member from helping, uh, reach out to, you know, stakeholders, businesses, whoever sponsors to collect, uh, sponsorships or anything promoted. There's nothing saying that we, any of us can do. Uh, so there's no, really no need for an ad hoc, and, and, and let me remind you, the whole reason that, that this is, uh, we all know the history here in Westminster, we know the bad to me is an extremely sad situation with the division and within the Vietnamese community. Uh, politicizing, Mayor, you were a victim of, of that. You and former uh Mayor Ta were a victim of that la, that last year, as you can remember, how uncomfortable and how, how wrong that was, the way that that both of you were left out of, you know, the ceremonies, and, and the, the whole thing was completely politicized, and it was politicized uh years prior as well. And if, if we, as councilmembers, I keep hearing this term, which everybody says, it's like, we need to move our city forward. Well, let's, let's start, let's live by those words that we say, let's move the city forward and stop politicizing every single thing that happens in the city, especially within the Vietnamese community. Let's for once be a united Westminster. And let's, we can all promote this uh, this great event. Individually, we don't need to have a, an ad hoc committee to, to add to that and, and and, you know, possibly politicize it and create this atmosphere that was been so toxic in our city for many, many years. Let's start moving forward, like we say, we, like we always say, and stop politicizing this. We all can, you have extreme, a lot of ties and a lot of um relationships with the different businesses in the community, you've been, you've been in the community for many years. And so has uh Kimberly Ho, and I'm not sure about the, I'm not too familiar with the other councilmembers and their history and their connections and the ties to the community, but we all can do it individually, we don't need to do it as a ha, ad hoc committee. I just think it'd be very unproductive to, to create a committee.
I tend to agree with that. Um, I just think when you form an ad hoc committee up to, you're, I think you're basically trying to lock out the other, the other councilmembers. So, um, as said, um, input on cultural, any cultural advice, any help with advertising, um, you can mention on your shows, on your interviews about the Ted Parade without having to form an ad hoc committee. So, it is only gonna slow down the process. We only have, staff only has about a month uh to plan. So, um, for sure, council should not interfere with the logistics and operations of the parade. Um, and we must, and I think in the past, uh, by politicizing, I've seen some really bad practices, and I think uh exercise proper government protocol in terms of the order of the elected, how they should go. And it just tend to be so political. And um, we, we, we just don't need that. Um, and, and staff need to, you know, push forward, we all need to help. We don't need to form an ad hoc committee.
Um, Mr. Mayor, can I address?
Yes, please.
Carlos uh and Kimberly, a council member. Well, you know, in the last week, I've been sitting down with our staff from Christine, our city manager, to planning, to all of you, Vanessa, you know, you guys, Deb, Debbie, you guys are phenomenal staff. You guys work your butt off. And I believe that you guys have tons of potential and expertise. And for the council to say that this is a burden for you guys, you guys like think outside the box. And that's what I love about you guys. And I want you guys to be able to do your job. And by allowing you guys to do this, this is something traditional within the city, and it has happened every year. But for them to underestimate your guys' ability is a shame, because I know.
I don't think they're underestimating, I think they misunderstood.
The burden for them.
Understood.
Please, 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 please.
I've seen.
Think that's what we said.
I think.
We said.
That was a woman, Amy. Please, uh.
Your, your chair is tall already.
Please, hold on.
Our staff, our staff, phenomenal.
I like to stop.
You misunderstood, my dear, you misunderstood.
House member.
It's not hard for a house member.
Please, please. I, I respect every one of you, and so when he's, when it's her turn, let's see finish, and I will call you up next. That's how we order the, the, you know, orderly, conduct the meeting, so please, uh, let her finish.
So back to what I was saying, is that I trust in our staff, in the ability.
I'd like to ask you to be quiet, because we heard you already. Now is uh time for the council to do the city business. Thank you.
Thank you. So, back to what I was saying, I trust our staff because I see their skills and ability, but it's just in the last council, it seems like, previous, they don't have a chance to shine, to do their job. And I know with this, we can see them, we can see our staff taking care of this parade, because the staff is in charge of this, okay, event. And for them, I, I can see them doing an amazing job, which I'm very, very excited to see. And uh, you know, I, I think it's awesome that you guys are gonna partake in this and leading this charge with the uh ad hoc committee. Uh, I think that's great, phenomenal. I can't wait to see the.
Mayor.
Please, hold on, please.
Hold on.
Mayor?
No, 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 please, it's 12 o'clock, that's what, exactly that, what I want to do.
Okay, I make a motion to.
We have the resolution that, you know, at the, you know, at midnight, we have to vote whether we want to continue uh this meeting.
We have a, I make a motion to continue the meeting, we have a couple more items on the agenda, one of them is an important one, that was a late emergency walk-on item, so I make a motion to continue.
I second it.
Finish it.
We have a motion and second on the floor to continue the, the meeting until we finish.
I would like to make a substitute motion to continue, but only to take on the ta, uh, walk-on ag, agenda. Because we seem to be so off-base on this ad hoc committee, and it's gonna go on and on. We're so off-base, I think Miss uh uh Newbie over there is so off-base, so.
Just turn this into, uh, councilmember.
Please.
Turn this into a.
I don't think she understands. So somebody needs to explain that to her, so you do need to, yeah, thank you. But uh, uh, yeah, I would like to say, like, as I said, I just need a second on my substitute motion.
A second. For the sake of unity and peace, I'll second it. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a substitute.
Again.
We would vote on first, and that's to continue the meeting, but only for the purpose of discussing item 5.3.
Correct.
Presumably, that means that we would have no further discussion on 5.1 or 5.2. So that motion is on the table right now. If that motion fails, then we would go back to uh the original motion, which was to continue the meeting until we finish 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3.
So there, there were two motions on the floor, and uh, repeat the first motion, please. I know what is that, what that is, but I'd like for staff to repeat that motion, the original motion.
Room.
The original.
Substitute.
I understand, I understand.
Excuse me, the substitute motion is only to continue with item 5.3, not 5.1 or 5.2. The original motion made by Councilmember uh Manzo and the mayor was to continue to complete the entire uh agenda, 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3.
Okay, go ahead and roll call.
The motion made by Councilmember Ho, seconded by uh couns, uh, by Councilmember Manzo. Councilmember Fan West?
Okay, let me just be clear, this is the substitute.
Substitute, yeah.
No.
Uh, Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
No.
Mayor Nguyen?
No.
Motion fails, three, two. So the next motion goes back to the original motion made by Councilmember Manzo, seconded by uh Mayor Nguyen, to continue uh for the rest of the agenda, excuse me. Councilmember uh Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
No.
Councilmember Ho?
No.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries three, two.
All right, uh.
Where, where we, we were, now, Mayor, since uh Councilmember Wes directed a, a comment to me, I'd like to answer, where were you when I was speaking?
I was here.
I wasn't, I wasn't, I never, I never even.
Uh, please, I would like to ask you to be quiet so that we can do the business.
Please, order. Our, our staff cannot handle it.
Sam, I have to, I have to ask you to leave. Because let us do our city business. You, we already listened to you, please.
I said, thank you, Mayor. I said, I said that our staff, it was giving our staff one more thing to do. I never said they couldn't handle, they were, we're creating, giving them just one more job in such a short amount of time to do. That's what I said. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure you witnessed just a little bit of what the dedication that are, that, that very compact staff that we have all the way around. I've had the, the luxury of knowing each and every one of these staff members, with the exception of Debbie and, and Lucy for 10 years now. So I know how hard our staff works. I know each and every one of them, how dedicated they are. So don't you ever dare say that I'm, they don't have any confidence on them. This is your first day on the job. How would you know?
Right. Well, I sat down with them and.
Uh, with Mayor.
Mayor Nguyen, uh, Mayor, Mayor coming on.
My.
Hold on, hold on, let's finish.
My concern was the timeframe that we have left between now and I believe the 28th, isn't that correct, uh, city manager? Went 20 seconds, excuse me, 20 second. So that's a very short amount of time that we had left for staff to put together this major, major event that takes a lot of moving parts. I mean, I'm sure uh Councilmember, um, excuse me, uh, Mayor Nguyen would know how, how, how much work is involved in putting together something like this, and maybe also Councilmember Ho. So to do one, to put, adding more work to a very short amount of time was my concern. Never, ever was, did I ever mention that I didn't have confidence in our staff?
Hmm.
That's a freak, you know what, that's, yeah, I'm sorry that I'm so upset, Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Wes. But please, before you make any kind of comment like that, please inform yourself about uh the situation. So, yeah, that, that very find that, I, I find that comments that you made very offensive and, and unnecessary for this conversation.
Uh, I.
Mayor, Mayor.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to call for uh Vice Mayor, because he, he was the one who requested before you.
Okay. Um, uh, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Amy, um, for your comment before. Um, when you mentioned that we need a new blood, a fresh blood, you know, in the city, in the council chamber to make the city moving forward. So, um, Council, Councilman Menzo, Councilman Menzo, um. Council, Councilman Manzo, Councilman Manzo, um, he bring up a. Um. Say, she say, he say that. Um, with experience, like, uh, councilwoman Ho, you know, she can do a better things. I don't think so. Just look at. The four years under your watch, the city is in chaos. The bad experience didn't bring, bring it anywhere. So we need a new leadership that can take care of.
We're off-base here. Can we, we need to be on point.
Please, let, let him finish.
As you would be, Sam. We need the, the one with. Experience, more experience to, to run the, to run a tape parade. So with that said. I think I'm going to, uh, make a motion to. To nominate, um, Mayor Charlie and, um. Uh, councilwoman Amy Fan West into the, the Ted Parade Ad-Hoc Committee.
And now, uh, council, councilwoman Ho.
Yes, I, I don't think, I need, I think, uh, and I, and I'm being very respectful here. I just think. Somebody needs to explain to councilwoman West what an ad hoc committee is because she seems to be. Very off-base and so I'm, I, I think you just need to take time to learn and it's okay not to know from your first day. But please don't make strong accusations about, um, I'm not gonna repeat, but that, that would be my advice to you. And so she doesn't even know what an ad hoc committee is and she's, uh, really off-base, so I don't know why you're. Um, recommending or you're, uh, you're nominating her. Um, basically what it is, is I concur with the comment earlier made by, um, councilman Monzo. Regarding not having an ad hoc committee. And let me just kinda try to explain that and speak slowly so that, you know. You, you, we, we don't misunderstand one another. Um, an ad hoc committee would be just naming what's being proposed here. Five point one is to name two council members. So yes, uh, councilmember Wes, that I do have faith, a lot of faith in our staff and our staff should be able to handle. Uh, the process on their own without having council, council members, um, having an aside ad hoc committee. Um, and as said earlier, any of our council members could help and we will all pitch in. But having two people on an ad hoc committee, uh, what does that mean? And it's only gonna slow down staff and they do have, um, probably. About a month to plan this, you know, big event.
Can, Mr. Mayor, can I address that?
Cause I have to. Done, what are you doing?
For, uh, what Kimberly was saying, it's just.
Councilwoman Ho.
That I don't know, but with an ad hoc is that we're just, you know, working alongside, just helping, uh, the staff whatever they need regarding the, uh, Ted Parade. But the thing is that, um. It's interesting how, uh. We've seen in the last, you know, four years, right? The council, all of them want to get involved and fight over stuff and nothing is done. With the ad hoc, at least we have two council members working together with the staff here to get it done. And I think that's very important. Versus for everyone, no one would get done and we've seen that. And you guys wanna rerun that again for the next four years on the type parade? I don't think so.
All right.
So anyways, I agree with I, uh, most, I second, um. Nam Quang, councilmember Nam Quang to, uh, for Charlie, you know, he has experience and like you guys want experience. We have experience.
Yeah, he has like about thirty years experience on. Organizing.
Fresh blood.
Letting it finish.
So that's what we have. That's what you guys want, the council want. Experiment, experience and fresh blood. So that's why we're having this ad hoc co- committee.
This is the time, this is the time for the council to do the city business. So please.
She doesn't, you don't know what you're saying.
Then I will, I will come in because I respect the council. Let them talk, but this is ta- time for me to talk now. To answer your, um, question, councilmember Ho, I think if you read from the background of the staff report. I read it for you guys who doesn't, who don't have the, the staff report. The ad hoc committee would assist with reaching out directly to potential sponsors and advisors. Advertisers and provide guidance to staff regarding topics of cultural, cultural sensitivity. That is very important right there. Such, uh, traditions in the Vietnamese community that may affect the parade. Okay, that's very clearly to, um, you know, stated in their staff report. So right now I call for, uh, I call for questions. Is there a second to that?
Uh, mayor, before, I just have a question.
Call for the questions and we have. Sure, in a second, please have a recall, please.
I have a question for staff, not for council. I have a question for staff. Um, is there? If without, if, let's say, when there's no ad hoc committee, correct, right now, is there anything keeping? Any member of the city council from reaching out to sponsors or? Or anybody in the community to be, help with the Ted Parade, be involved? Is there anything keeping and currently right now? No, so, and isn't that the same with the, with the ad hoc committee would do? So what's the point? Having a, isn't, isn't it the same thing? Isn't it, uh, right now, any of us can go out and meet and with sponsors and, you know, culture, and, and advise. Right now, any, any member of the council can come to staff and say, uh, this, and speak about cultural traditions or what, what may not, right?
That is correct.
Right now, right now.
That is correct.
So what's the difference between now and not having an ad hoc and having an ad hoc? What's the difference? Is there a difference at all?
There's no difference. We don't have an ad hoc for Black April.
You don't have one. To the mayor and council members. Like I said before, let's please move forward and stop politicizing everything.
For the, the important things is, I don't want to go further on this one, but I want to make sure that this is, you know, um, um. The publics and also the city councils mentioned that there are a lot of works for the staff. And there are things that, you know, related to cultural sensitivity, which they not, they are not in the community. They are not, they were not in the community and they might not know about the sensitivity of, of, of that issues. So here we are as a committee to overlook, to oversight of what is might happening. Okay, it's just so that we can have more eyes on the issues that might happen to, uh, you know, to the Ted Parade. So at this point here, we already have the motion on the floor and we already call for questions. I'd like to ask, uh, Madam Clerk to, uh, take a look or a vote, please.
Thank you, mayor. That motion, uh, is to call for the question and the motion was made by, uh, Mayor Nguyen, seconded by councilmember Fan West. Uh, councilmember Fan West.
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo.
Uh, before I vote, um, I want to add another question for staff. Is there, is there any parameters set on this, what this ad hoc committee? Uh, was gonna be, uh, doing and, and the protocol for them delivering this information to staff and working with staff? And it's, and also, uh, something saying what they can and cannot do. As far as, um, marketing it, changing the marketing a certain way. The last thing we, we need to do, keep this in mind. Keep this in mind. That taxpayers are paying for this parade, okay? And if we start marketing where it's, this is going to this group or that group is taking credit for it, like so happens here in Westminster. Legally, what can that do to our city? Uh, city attorney?
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear here because the, the words. Called a question were, were put out there. That's actually a, a separate motion to close debate and to vote on it. So the way I understood it, even though I think you used the words call the question, is that you wanna take a vote on the motion to appoint an ad hoc committee composed of yourself. So you are, you are making a motion to call the question.
Yes.
Okay, so.
It's already.
We never voted on it. So we're, the, the, the motion on the floor is to close debate and vote on the under.
Correct. And then the, Madam Clerk already called the vote on that. So go, go ahead and continue on that. We are no longer discussing about this one.
I have a question for.
No, I call for the vote already and then we have this motion and second on the floor.
I have a question, is how, when do we add the parameters?
Yeah, you can just.
We need to add parameters. When will we do that? We can vote.
Well, we could, we could do that after.
Okay.
So, so it's a motion to call the question. That takes priority and you have to take the vote now. There's no more discussion.
Right.
Should vote on.
Councilmember Monzo.
No.
Councilmember Ho.
No.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion carries three, two.
Okay, so now, now you need to take a motion.
So now we, we already have the motion and second on the floor to, um, to move on for the, to create the ad hoc committee.
The motion was made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by councilmember Fan West, and that was to nominate Mayor Nguyen and councilmember Fan West to the ad hoc committee. Councilmember Fan West.
This is the motion.
This is the original, right? Yes. Is this the original motion, right?
Sure.
The motion, yeah, okay.
Councilmember Monzo.
No.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yes.
Councilmember Monzo.
Uh, no.
Thank you. Councilmember Ho.
No.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. Motion carries three, two.
It was in between.
The win and wins.
Okay, next we are moving on to the, the item five point two, request to consider options for relocating the mayor's office.
Well, I'm, I wanna go first on this one. Again, here we are. Here we are again with all this, um, talk and, and it's starting to get to me. Uh, I, I, I understand it doesn't just happen here in Westminster, but I think this is a typical, pretty much everywhere. Let's move our city forward. We had our two, our, actually three, uh, new, uh, elected, uh, council members and mayor who said this today. Let's move our city forward. Well, here in Westminster, for many, many, many years, prior to any of us here, including, uh, Mayor Charlie Nguyen. Including Mayor Tong, for many years, many years. We've had a major problem here in our city. The very toxic work environment in our city. That toxic work environment has brought, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody who's been here for a long time. Um, have we, we've had lawsuits come before, brought, 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 uh, onto our city. Uh, because of, um, working conditions, uh, council interference, council inter- uh, uh, council intimidation. Brought before and, and we've lost those lawsuits. Have we not had lawsuits of that kind? If anybody's here long enough that could answer that question, we've had those type of lawsuits brought before us, before. And the whole reasoning for this current ordinance was to move our city forward. That's the whole basis of why this ordinance is in place now. And I'm proud that we, that our previous council was, may, took this major step. To, to securing. The, the safety and, and changing the morale, changing. Just the way the environment is in, in this city, in city hall. By make, so that employees, staff can work freely. Can work freely to do their job. It is human nature. It is human nature because it happens to me every single day. It is human nature that when a boss walks into the room. Staff. It just changes them, changes the air in the room. It just does. There's not helping it, nothing, anybody's doing wrong. Nobody's doing anything wrong. It's just human nature. It's just human nature that when a boss walks in the room. The air changes. And not, it is not about pointing fingers and saying somebody's doing something wrong. But for once, we started moving the city in a positive direction. Moving the count, the mayor, this has nothing to do with Mayor X or Ma- Mayor Y, it's about just the office itself. The city hall is not a political building. City hall is not a political building. The council chamber is, this is where the council business is handled. This is where we have discussions. This is where we sometimes argue, sometimes we're doing the council business. And that's where this needs to stay in this building. For once, we, we started moving our city forward. For once. And to move, there is no need, it has mayor, I, I'm sure you, hopefully you do understand what I'm saying. Just like I explained this to our former mayor Tong, it has nothing to do with one person or another. It's just. The way it is, is just moving our city forward and, and, and cleaning up. And, 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 and the tox- the toxic environment has been plaguing and it's been a cancer on this city. For multiple, many, many years. Many years. And let's, let's, I'm not done yet.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not done.
Go ahead.
So. The mayor's position. And, and the same for every council position is a part-time. We are not responsible for any day-to-day administrative, uh, action. We have no authority whatsoever. To direct staff to do something. Everything has to go through the city manager. That's the city manager form of government. That are, we are under. The city, the, the, the office of the, of the mayor. Is, even though i- it's a, at large, currently at large here, but for the most part, it's a ceremonial position. That the mayor is responsible for running the meeting. The mayor is the face of the community, face of the council. But at the end of the day, is not responsible for the, the day-to-day operation of the city. There's no need to have an office in, 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 in a building. In our situation and here in Westminster. Our city hall building is, is not large enough. It's not large enough to house the, the staff that is necessary to run. Uh, the city. We need that extra, that extra room. That, that mayor office used to be in this council chamber. But I don't, I don't, I don't know what, this is way before any, any of us time and actually before mayor, before mayor's time. I forgot what mayor moved it into the city hall and, and that was a bad move because, like I said, that brought some bad, uh. You know, like I said, it brought some bad, bad environment into that building and, and intimidation and, and. Just things that, that the, the staff in that building. It's just, you know, it's not comfortable to work there when you have an elected official walking around that building. And, 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 and if I read the staff report as far as, it says that. For visitors. To be able to have visitors in there, well, that's, that, that, that only, that's very intrusive. And, and, uh, it totally, um, not only intrusive, but you can't have, uh, media, you can't have. Uh, visitors just roaming around in city hall. That's, you can't have that. You can't, you, you, you can't have that. There's, you can't, you can't, uh. Just disrupt what, uh, staff is working on and have to worry about. You know, news media like there was before in the past, you have media going in there. And now staff, all if it's, you're walking, they're walking right in the path and where staff is working. You can't have that. You can't have visitors just roaming there. This has nothing to do. When, when this was brought forward, this has. This is telling, I find it telling how we keep saying that we wanna move the city forward and then.
Councilman So, can I?
Still not done.
With, with. With all due respect.
Let's let him finish.
Five minutes. I don't have a clock in front of me. I can talk as long as I want.
Vice Mayor.
Disrespectful to staff and the public.
Here we go.
Yeah, you got.
About finish.
Sure. I'm almost about.
Okay. And that's about midnight already and then you.
Vice Mayor.
Respect people.
Vice Mayor.
We're not going to sit here and listen to talking forever.
Vice Mayor Nguyen, he's almost finished. Let me finish. Please, go ahead and finish it.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, it's about respect.
Yes, I'm respect you.
Mayor. Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, please, 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 let him finish. Go ahead and finish.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember.
Um, yeah, it's it's about that. It it's not about.
Who is.
Not about anything personal to against anybody. It's just about cleaning up our the environment and cleaning up the toxicity that's been going around our city for many years. So that's it. You guys are gonna do what you're gonna do, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something quick? Just quick.
I I next, uh, I, you know, I thought uh during that, you know, I thought he finished. I tried to jump in and then he said he's not finished and I respect that. And now it's my turn to say it.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I don't disagree with you and I totally agree with you that the the mayor is the face of the council. And the mayor is the face of the city. You said that.
Yeah.
You said that right. And that's the reason why the mayor is staying in the city council where they can meet people, they can greet people, uh meeting with people. Now, there is a concern that you have before and you also must just mention it that you are afraid that people roaming around the City Hall. And I can tell you the option that they uh that staff came up, there are three options. And if you don't know that, then let me go ahead and take the time and greet that for you.
Yeah, really.
Number one, move the mayor's office back to southwest corner office of the City Hall. This option will not incur any additional cost, which is the same mayor's uh tree tower office before. Which there is a concern for you that people will walk through uh City Hall to to come to his uh office. Now, option number two, relocate mayor's office into City Hall small conference room, which is right at the front where they have the door that they can come in from the outside and get out from that from 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 that. So there is no need to enter the 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 uh front of the City Hall if if not needed. So that is the option number two. And I don't know that you know that the small conference room that we are talking about.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Number three, continue to proceed with the relocation process of moving mayor's office to council chambers and modify the current council member's office. And this is, this option is to knock out the uh council office in order to modify it, to make it into the the conference room and the mayor's office. So those are the three options that staff came up with. And I think that the option number two already addressed the problem that you just said, two of them. The mayor's is the face of the city council. The mayor's is the face of the city. And I I can see that clearly. So now, uh, before I entertain uh any uh motion, I'd like to go back to the member West.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I actually agree with Councilmember Carlos that we are moving, we're finally moving our city forward, and that's correct with this new council. You know, as I talked to, I'm speaking out loud for the resident and the staff. The resident has been feeling ashamed of the count, how it's been run in the last two to four years as I talk, and all of us can agree. It it the infighting is discouraging. Uh, no one wants to uh come to Westminster. No one wants to give attention. And not only that, on top of that, our staff cannot do their job and they're walking on eggshell. It's not going to happen in this new council that we have today sworn in. And that I believe we will, and I agree with you, we are finally moving our city forward. And it is important to have this new leadership. We're not going to waste any more of our uh, you know, voters' time watching this, the people's time, nor the staff's time. Uh, we need to be respectful, you know, to uh to them. We all have families. We all have, you know, it's, come on, it's almost one o'clock. This is unacceptable. This is so disrespectful to the public who's watching this and goes on and on in the last four to two years. And not only that, our staff doesn't feel pride in the place where they work. And I'm speaking out loud. And under this new leadership of new council and mayor, we will move the uh city forward. We will allow our staff to do their job and to shine and to think outside the box, and they're not going to take no for an answer. Likewise, this new council, we're not taking no for an answer. We we are going to make it happen. And we're going to think outside the box. I'm very excited and I agree with you on that part. But now I agree with both of you guys on the mayor is the face of the city. And for him to conduct business in the city, he needs to have his own office. And you know what? When I heard about the previous mayor, Tree Ta, his office, he was moved out. He was homeless. Our mayor was homeless, guys? That is shameful for a city. We need to bring honor back to the city. We need to bring honor back to a workplace. We need to bring honor back to this council. I'm not going to sit here for the next four years and see that go through that shame again for our city. It's not going to happen. And so that's why I think it's important to have the mayor of the city have his own office. He cannot be homeless. That's unacceptable. And that's why I I s- second, I motion to move uh the mayor to the City Hall. He needs his own office.
Is that an option? Number two that you're talking about?
Whenever there was nothing.
Oh, gosh.
There's some.
God helps us.
Um, um, can I, can I just make a real mayor?
God.
Can I make a um just a real quick um cur- uh just not, I'm not picking a fight with you, but Councilmember West, but the mayor was never kicked out of his office. There's a bill, there's an, there's inside this building, you, we all have offices inside this building, including the mayor would have his office in here. So there he was never homeless.
He's sharing with his own four office.
That one of them was in the.
Okay, I I think I think we all have turned uh to talks. And I know that the vice mayor wants to talk about it. So uh now I I would like to call on the vice mayor for your comment.
Yeah, first of all, um, I agree with the Councilman Manzo that uh the mayor is the face of the city. That's um and I've been here in this um chamber listen to all the argument fighting over the relocation of um the previous, the former mayor Jita to to this building from the City Hall to this building. And I think that's unacceptable from my point of view. The reason that the previous council voted on it to relocate Jita's office to this building. It just because the po- po- their own political gain. They want to humiliate the former mayor.
Hmm.
So this, I asking around, walking around Huntington Beach, Garden Grove, Fountain Valley. The office of the mayor is in the City Hall. So we are not going to discuss the childish thing like this to waste the tax money. When the clock ticking, five minutes, ten minutes, we have to pay for it. The people have to pay for it. I make a promise to the people of Westminster that I came here to stop the waste of the resource, the waste of the money that the people work and pay for us.
I uh, I thank you very much.
Please let me finish.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So with that, I would like to make a motion.
There's a motion already.
There's a motion already. Oh, okay, you make a motion? Yeah, with that said.
The motion.
I'm going to second that.
What's the?
Um, Councilmember West, can you repeat the motion, please?
Yes, I say I motion to move uh the mayor uh into City Hall because I agree with you, Carla.
Two options.
So it's the option two, right?
Is it?
Uh, five point two.
Option, there's there are three options. So you want option two, right?
Uh, I I motion to have his office right in front where it's not interacting with any of the staffs.
That's his option two.
That's option two.
That's option two.
Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor. I call for uh.
Mayor, can I just real quick? Thank you, uh, Mayor. Um, um, thank you, um, uh, Vice Mayor Nguyen. Um, another cities, just um just an FYI. When it isn't, when the mayor's office is in the same building, it's separated somehow. It's separated by there is only access to the outside or and or it's on a different floor on on most cities. It's not like the currently that way we have it currently right now. So it's just just that FYI.
Thank you. So we have a motion and second on the floor. Leo, look up, please. Look up.
Let me just clarify, though. We do have an ordinance that has some language that would need to be changed.
Correct.
So so if this direction is given, the way you've made the motion, staff would come back with an ordinance to change that.
Okay.
Okay, so we think we have to officially do that. So.
Thank you.
Chief.
Please. For City Manager.
Yeah, so the other, the other side of that too, because I don't want to come back in January to talk about this or have to have a special meeting, but in the meantime, that the mayor's office on this side, are you going to place them? It's late. Are you going to plan on staying on this side in the interim until the ordinance comes back and goes for, you know, first reading, second reading and adoption, or what would this council like to do?
The the way that I see it before, you can vote on the motion and go so go for their ordinance approval.
But yeah, no, that 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 is.
Prepare.
That is, that is correct. Uh, that's clear what you want to do, but as of right now, you're not going to be able to move right away into that small conference room out in the front because it'll have to be under, you know, construction, if you will. What do you want to do about your offices right now?
Right, what about a temporary office?
Office, I can, I can be anywhere over here. That's fine, no problem. But while I want to make sure that we can do this as soon as possible because I promised with the public that I will have my office hour already announced, starting next year. Okay, beginning of next year. So I'd like to have a staff to move forward. If once this one is approved, if this approved, then I'd like to have staff move uh as quick as possible.
We can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
So please, um, look up.
Thank you. So the motion was made by Councilmember Fan West, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen, and that is to move the mayor's office to um City Hall, option number two. Councilmember Fan West?
Like and and direct staff to come back with the ordinance?
And direct staff to come back um with the ordinance.
Yes.
Fine with the mayor and the second.
On the ordinance?
As quick as possible.
With the who? What? I'm sorry?
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Sorry.
I I the ordinance would, you would put it on the, we could put it on the agenda as an amendment, you know, it's the ordinance on uh January eleventh meeting, first reading, second reading. If you guys don't make substantial changes to it, can go on the second meeting in January when that is, I think it's the twenty fourth.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, the way, the way I see this, we can begin to make the changes to that office.
Mm hmm.
And and at the same time, we we can bring the ordinance back and have the meantime, it will be here in one of the offices until we get that work done.
I guess.
Orients and the construction work.
Because the other side, because as we're going down this rabbit hole further and further, because we want to make sure we come back with the right ordinance, what would the council like to do with the rest of the offices?
All right.
Because there's four offices here.
But why don't we take that as a separate motion?
Do you want to do a separate motion?
This one and then.
So that was agreed to by the maker and the second, uh, Councilmember Fan West?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Monzo?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Ho?
No.
Uh, Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries three two.
Um, uh, just for the record, um, I mean, as far as a concession for for this um residence and for myself, since I've I was a proponent of this ordinance, I just want to say at least there that you chose option two. I mean, it's not the best, but at least you're is is an effort to somehow separate. So I guess it's a concession. So I guess I would say thank you for that.
Thank you. Now, um, I'd like to move on to um five point three.
But before you move on, though, is there any direction about what to do with the council, the the offices that are here? Do you want to leave those alone?
The let.
Just leave them alone.
Leave those alone. Leave it. So leave it. So just keep them as four individual offices.
Yes.
We're not converting. Okay, perfect.
Okay, any question on that now? No more? Okay, let's move on to item uh five point three, urgency item that uh we voted uh to put on agenda today. Approval of California Department of Tax and Fee Administration agreements for implementation of local transaction and use tax TUT measure wise self, measure wise self tax.
May to approve.
Seconding.
We have us the motion with approval uh by Councilmember Ho and seconded by Councilmember Manzo. Look up, please.
Thank you, Mayor. That motion was made by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Councilmember Monzo, and that is to approve a resolution entitled the Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, California, authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with the California Department of Tax Fee Administration for implementation of a local transaction and use tax in a form approved by the city attorney and adopt a resolution entitled the Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, California, authorizing the examination of sales or use transaction and use tax records in order to proceed with implementation of ordinance number two, five, eight, nine, enacting measure Y as approved by Westminster voters and authorize a budget increase to the general fund for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars account finance contractual in order to pay the California Department of Fee and Tax Administration for uh preparatory costs for implementing the transaction and use tax. Councilmember Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
All right, next is um comments from the city council agency members, uh, including A B one, two, three, four, report uh when required.
All right, Mayor, can I?
Yeah, please, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm I'm gonna uh can get again, uh congratulate uh our two new council members. Uh, it's a welcome aboard. Uh, can also congratulate uh Mayor, Mayor Nguyen. Congratulations again. It's um new council. I was hoping for a smoother first meeting, but it is what it is. Um, hopefully we can be able to find some way to take our our perception out because I think that's what happened here today. There were some perception that there's a us against them kind of thing, and there's not. Um, there's maybe a lot of propaganda out there that what's going on in this council. It seems that that's the way it was because there was some notion miss miss misinformation out there that the mayor was homeless. He was never homeless. There's there's an office right there. Um, um, I just want to say, uh, we had our our finally a in person and it was a great event tree lighting ceremony, which was awesome to see so many folks come out and 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 be a community supporting each other, support our children that they came out and we had some really great. that they came out and we had some really great performances. We had, uh, different kids, they have had, uh, the singing, dancing, we had, uh, adults, our seniors, uh, also a choir. I mean, it was awesome to see so many, uh, uh, our community members come out and, and entertain us and, and get us in the holiday spirit, um, the, in this city and in this council we need. So that was an awesome event. Thank you, um, Vanessa and all your team for putting that great event together, that, that was, we desperately needed that, that was great to be back in person. And also thank you for, uh, staff and for, um, for the Santa's breakfasts that we had this past weekend. It was, that was another great event to see community members out and, and getting to know each other, congregating and, and having fun with our kids there and, and just spending time together. It, it was, it was good to do that again and, and, and we continue that with the, the past Friday night with the Santa on the go, another great event put together by Vanessa, um, just, you, she's putting in a lot of hours and her team, it, it's just, it's awesome to see. Thank you for that and, and I look forward to this coming weekend. We have, um, two more Santa on the go events. I hope that the community comes out and supports each other and come out and have a good time with each other and get to know one another. Um, so thank you for that, um. Debbie, thank you so much for the time you've spent with us. It was great to know you and, and, and great to have you and helping us in so many different ways and that your knowledge that Christina I know took advantage of. Um, and, and all of us, we did, we all took advantage of it. So thank you very much. Hope that you, hopefully come back and visit us if you have some free time and, you know, it'd be nice to see you, uh. I know you were such a good dancer when we had our Fall Festival. I'm like, man, this, this, she can dance, you know? So I had to get out, she put, she put me on, she was testing me out, so...
And you're tired right now?
Yes, so, so thank you so much. That was great. But that's what it's about, folks. It's about, um, community. It's not a, it's about community first and, and united. And, and that's what I love to see. So I'm excited for, to see that and hopefully we can, um, keep, keep that going here in our city, hopefully that we're able to find some funding to continue those community events and to join our, our, our our community together. Um, that's awesome to keep doing that. So thank you for Debbie and, and and this is just, uh, something that, that I, I know this is the first day and, and the ma- mayor's pretty good about this. Um, we, I'm not big on, on, on titles. I'm not, the title to me, uh, it's, it's an honor for sure to be an elected official and it's a big responsibility. And outside this, outside this, uh, this building and, and and when it's not a, when it's just a out in public and it's a personal thing where, where it's not formal, what I should say, if it's not formal, I'm just Carlos. Everybody knows me that. All you guys know me, that's how I am. But when it's a, a, a formal setting, we as, as council members, we have to be professional and we have to learn to do that. So up here in the dais, I, I, and Mayor Nguyen, he knows I've had conversations with him about that. I refer to him as Mayor, Mayor Nguyen. And all of us here, and I refer to the rest of you as council members, they're not now Vice Mayor. So it's important what we say up here. So for the, the two new members, um, yeah, up here, it's, it's Councilmember Monzo, Mayor Nguyen, Councilmember Ho, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, Nguyen, and Councilmember West up here on the dais. And anytime we're in a formal setting, but outside that, I'm just Carlos. I'm, I'm fine with that, but that's just my personality, that's who I am. So, so thank you very much and thank you staff for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Menso. I totally agree with, uh, what he just spoke. Um, I, like he said, I mentioned that, uh, I have a conversation with him about this before and, uh, I totally agree with that. So next, uh, Councilmember comments.
And I comment, Mr. Mayor. Okay, you know, for the last, uh, couple of years of COVID lockdown and you know, the hardship that a lot of family members and our staff and everyone have experienced and you know, i- it's so amazing for me that we're finally almost getting out of that and, you know, getting back to normal. Uh, but I, what I've noticed and witnessed in the last, you know, two and a half years that we help each other. We are a community that reach out to one another as we have multi-different culture in the city of Westminster, you know? And it's so nice to see that people are reaching out and helping their neighbors. And that's what I want to, for us to continue, is to have this heart of helping one another, neighbors helping one another, agree to disagree. Maybe we have different politics, different values, but we can agree to disagree and help our neighbors. That's how it was back in the days, you know what I mean? When the politics wasn't so, you know, hot and heavy, right? I guess you can say. But, uh, it's just nice where we can go back to that and during COVID, that's what I saw, is that the community came together, we helped one another because we are here together. You know, we struggle together, our pocket, you know, uh, if our pocket hurts, their pocket hurts as well, right? Uh, they have kids, you know, their, uh, kids' education's hurting, our kids' education's hurting as well. But we came together and helped one another and that's why we're stronger. And I know that we're Americans, we are resilient. We are people that will fight for our family, our freedom and our way of life, and we have always done that. And we will continue moving this city forward and we will continue as a community to do that. And that's what I'm proud about, the, the people in Westminster area, the staff, the council. And, you know, that's what I look for in the next couple of years, uh, to continue this community aspect and to work together and that we are self-sufficient, that we help each other's business. Here in the city, we help each other, uh, and that's how we're going to be stronger together. No outside force can hurt us because we are self-sufficient and that's what we need to be as we move forward. And so I'm very, very thankful for, you know, all of you guys here staying up so late to hear the council meeting. And, um, you know, we will continue to move forward with respect of your time and our resource in the city. And, um, you know, I'm very excited to, excited to work with the staff moving forward here. And I cannot wait to see you guys think outside the box and be free, not tiptoeing anymore, but to be free with your skills and talents and ability and your specialty that we can glean upon. So I'm very, very excited working with you guys. So thank you so much for everything and thank you for a great community, uh, Westminster community that love and want to make it better. God bless you guys and Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Nguyen or Councilmember Ho? Go ahead, uh, Vice, Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Uh, it's 1 o'clock in the morning and, uh, I know that, uh, everybody eager to go home. Uh, we should not be here, you know, at this kind of hour. I have a children at home and, uh, they need to be tucked in bed. Um, I think, um, okay, I'm sorry for that, you know, keeping, uh, um, on the staff, the police officer and everybody here. So, um, when I came to, uh, when I walk around the neighborhood campaigning, I make a promise to the public that I want to bring some change to the city. And, uh, by saying that, uh, I think, uh, I'm going to re- make a recommendation that, uh, we will, we should make some change to, uh, the schedule that, uh, we have right now. This, to me, is absurd. Um, I know, um, that a councilwoman, uh, Amy Fan West, she had, she, she, she has like three boys and, uh, they need their moms, you know, to be home at this hour. So, um, um, two days ago, um, I went on board with, um, the staff. We meeting with, uh, I meet with the staff, I see the attorney Christian. And, um, I'm glad that, uh, um, I can ask all the questions that you guys, you know, answer is very professional. And, uh, um, I think with the new council, I make a promise to the staff also that we're going to give you the new tools to push the city forward. And we're going to make that happen for the sake of the city, for the sake of the people. Thank you.
Councilmember Ho?
Uh, yes, um, well, first of all, congratulations to our new elected. Um, I am looking forward to seeing what everybody can do to help, um, our city. But, um, in response, a little bit in response to Vice Mayor Nguyen talking, saying about staying up late and, and how your dad, you want to tuck your children in and how she's a mom and she needs to be home. Well, you know, in case you didn't remember, and that was just a few hours ago and you had your swearing in, so we don't have the swearing in every day, every, at every meeting. So we didn't start our meeting until 9:30, 10 o'clock, in case you forgot. So, um, if we had, if we, we usually started at 7:00 PM and it, and it for, you know, it went on for three hours, we would have ended it at 10 o'clock. So, um, I think we're doing okay. Um, if we didn't have the, uh, the swearing in, uh, we would have added, ended at, at 10 o'clock, so pretty reasonable time. Um, moving on, I just want to say hello and actually, um, thank Director Debbie Carita. Where are you? Well, first of all, I want to thank you for loaning me your Santa's hat the other day. I really enjoyed it. So you guys, uh, have a picture of me at the, uh, was a tree lighting, Christmas tree lighting ceremony with a hat and that was, that was Debbie Carita's hat. Thank you so much. Um, matched my outfit and it really, uh, really just made it more festive. Um, I would like to thank you for, for, for your help and for everything that you've done. Thank you for helping our city as an interim, uh, Community Development Director, in case, um, you guys don't know. Um, she's, you've been great. Um, you really are a great leader and a great, uh, team player. Um, I know that you top off at 9:60, you know what I mean? So, um, I think, uh, I guess, um, we'll see you a- again in July? Well, you know, it's 9:60, half a year, so you get half a year off and you come back in July. So, um, I'll put a, I'll put in a good word for you, um, RCM Christine. Yeah, thank you for, for your service and I hope, uh, this is not goodbye, um. But, um, you really led a great team, uh, our planning and, um, building division. Um, they really love you, I could tell, just from looking at them. Um, next, I'd like to, um, a matter of business. I like to, um, put the, um, I heard earlier, um, the QT, uh, Vice Chair spoke regarding a request for council to reconsider. It is a reasonable request and I'd like to agendize it. Thank you. For maybe sometime in January?
For, for you guys to reconsider the location?
It, it, right.
You, you can talk about it.
Location and I believe they mentioned that they're gonna take the, didn't they say they're gonna take the wall off? Uh, yeah, so, you know, if they're gonna do that, then let's put it on the agenda, reconsider relocation.
Okay, well, well, that'll depend on, um, when QT, the monument committee meets?
Yes.
We'll have staff work with them and that'll determine.
Hopefully that, yeah. Um, and then lastly, uh, of course, I, 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 I know that, um, there's been talks about me resigning or not resigning. And, um, you know, I, I, I've made a decision that I'm not going to give up on the city and I made a decision. Made a decision not to resign. I will be here to represent my constituents and protect their interests, your interests. Thank you. Thank you so much. Happy holidays and I'll see you next year.
Okay, uh, it's my turn now. Um, first of all, I would like to thank you all for being here until this time. Uh, I know it's late, I didn't expect that we need to go to the fall. Um, I know that I chat with, uh, city managers, he said that this will take, you know, see, would my, like to make it a light, uh, agenda so that we can get home early with, uh, the family. But then now it's 1 o'clock in the morning. So, uh, I want to thank you all for being here. Uh, thank you for your inputs, um, for your, um, you know, speak at the, at the oral communication. Just want to let you know that, you know, I, I entertain those, but, uh, you know, I just ask that if you, um, talk about, you know, somebody, please accom- accompany with, uh, you know, with the proof, you know, instead of, uh, you know, just blatantly accusation, then that's, it's not nice. Uh, like I said, that we need to move on, we need to move, you know, we need to move this city forward. So hopefully that we can work together, you know, just don't accuse each other for things that, that is not going to happen. And if we continue to do this, this city will continue to fight, you know, among the, 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 the communities. And that, that's not right, that's not, not nice. Let's put the business, city business in front of us for the benefit of their community, for the benefit of people in this city. Please, uh, it's my turn to talk. So, um, I also want to thank staff. There's no doubt that the staff have been working really hard lately, you know, due to, uh, Newcastle members, due to the election, due to many things, uh, you know, happened in the last couple of weeks, you know, including a special meeting that we need to get a few items, uh, you know, to, uh, move on before this council meeting. I know that they're so stressful for you, some of you. Uh, I witnessed that some of you that, uh, stay here until late, you know, at night to get the agenda out. So I feel for you. Um, I hope that, you know, for some, some, you know, some time later on, we don't have to go through that again so that you can go home with the family, you know, at the time that you need to go home. So I want to thank you, WPD also, uh, you know, for staying up until this time. Thank you staff and thank you for everyone. Thank you, the, the, you know, last, but not less. I'd like to, uh, work with, uh, everyone on the council so that we can move this city forward to the next level. Again, thank you very much and I want to adjourn the meeting and the next meeting is... The next me, the next meetings, I, oh, okay, I got it, we're here.
January 11.
The, 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 please, I have not finished the meeting, please. So I would like to ca- adjourn the meeting until the next regular meeting, uh, on Wednesday, January 11, 2023 at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.